Are you ready to start, though? Good.
All right, we'll begin, and thank you for joining us today.
And please join us all in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so before we move on to the consent calendar or modifications, I will ask first, I will actually give my modification first, then I'll go to you. But the item that is going to be heard regarding the Ferndale Racing item is going to be after 2:00 today. We've had a lot of people answering, so we wanted to give people a better idea of when to be here. So again, that will be after our 2:00 time set, which we don't think will take too long. So you can come back after the break at 1:30, or just at 2:00 is fine. All right, thank you. CAO Hayes, are there any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, Chair Bass, item D-18 will be polled for discussion.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion approved, the consent calendar minus item D-18?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. If you are on, if you're wanting to comment on this item, you should press star nine now to raise your hand. Turn your volume off on your phone because, I mean, on your video feed, because we will not know, how do I say it? There's a time lag, so you'll lose your opportunities to speak, so that's very important. I don't see any hands up yet in that queue, so I will go to those in the public. Is there anyone in the audience here today that would like to comment on items that are on the consent calendar? There are no, no one? Okay. Anyone on the phone yet? Do you see Nikki? Okay, we'll go back to the board on that. Any comments any board members want to make? Or just, are we ready to vote? And do we have the vote tab up? No, we don't quite yet. I mean Supervisor Bone is, yeah, can we just do a roll call on this one, please? Well, thanks.
Okay, whoops. Okay, Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 5-0.
All right, so now we're going to go to, we're gonna jump around, we're gonna go to the item which is H2 from DHHS regarding retired annuitant. And so I'll go to CAO Hayes.
I'll present that one, Chair Bass. This is just a procedural item which will allow for the waiver of the 180-day requirement with CalPERS to bring on a retired annuitant, Kathy Rigby.
I'll move that item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll go to the public here first. Does anyone here wish to speak on this item? I haven't seen no one. I don't see any hands up on the, on the phone yet or Zoom. Do Nikki? All right, so we'll go back to the board. I believe we are ready for a vote, and...
Am I doing roll call again?
I think so. I'm, mine's fine.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, Supervisor Bone?
Yeah.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 5-0.
All right, so now we'll move on to the item that's been pulled from consent, which is D-18, which I believe was pulled by Supervisor Bushnell? Okay, I wasn't sure if it's Bushnell or if it was Rex. So yes, and this to you.
So thank you through the chair. So I just had some questions I wanted to ask Director Ford regarding this. So I see in the past, the, we had a contract for around $500,000 and was up to $800,000, and now it's 1.5. And I'm wondering if we're utilizing consulting more, or if they're producing more. What is the reason for the increase?
So one of the things that we did in order to attempt to finish permitting all the interim permits primarily, and get the backlog of cannabis moved forward is to hire consultants. Currently, the consultants are completing about 35% of the projects that are moving through the system to approval. And so they are a very vital part of our overall processing.
Do the consulting firms, do we only have them working in certain areas such as cannabis and long-term planning? Or are we using them overall? Or what is the structure there?
No, that's a good question. So when we set these contracts up, we set them up so that primarily cannabis, we had some set up for current planning, although we're transitioning out of that this year and looking for in-house staff to do the current planning work. But what we are looking to do this year, because of the retirements of two senior planners, is to use consultants to do some of that more complicated work, just because we have a lack of experienced staff to be able to do that. And one of the things that consultants provide our experienced staff to, or experienced planners to be able to do that work.
Okay, and then one last question. Are we, our current staff, are we lacking there? Or we don't have staff members? Are they're not producing as, as much as they used to? What, what would be the, I mean, 35% of the work coming out of that department's quite a bit.
So there's a lot of things going on there. And the consultants have, throughout this process, in this iteration of the use of consultants, produced between 30 and 50% of the work. Some of the constraints with staff is that we do, we are able to recruit very good young staff, and they get trained. And unfortunately, they get trained, they get to a point of competence, and they frankly get recruited or hired to go to other places for higher-paying jobs. And so we keep people about 18 months.
So we're hiring consulting firms with the people that we trained and paying them a little more?
Actually, only one of, only one person working for a consultant, consulting firm left the county and went to work for that consulting firm. A lot of the people who leave go to Caltrans, go to CDFW, go to other jurisdictions in the southern part of the state.
Do you think that the retention problem is, is just related to a wage problem, or...
I think wage has a lot to do with it. Coming to Humboldt, you have to, one, like living here, and then you have to be able to afford to live here. I haven't verified this recently, but not long ago, we had four Planner Ones who were working second jobs and living with other people because they, they can't afford to live here on what we pay them. And, and so one of the people who left recently was very honest about the reason that she was looking for another job. She wanted to negotiate an increase in pay. But when she was offered the job, she actually ended up making more at the job that she had applied for than she would have had she gotten a promotion here.
Okay, well, thank you. I just, you know, had the questions around, you know, I get a lot of comments from constituents, why we're consulting outwork, and, you know, what, what's, you know, why aren't we able to accomplish that in our own building? And so thank you for clarifying all those questions.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Yes, Supervisor Bone?
And I know we've talked in the past, sometimes the consulting, especially when we're shorthanded, works out pretty well because they don't call in sick from COVID. They don't, you know, there's no state comp, there's no retirement, there's anything else. And with the package deal, it allows them to proceed, and they get paid for what they do. They don't get paid, you know. So I can see where it would work out, and it, it's a good way to trust the barometer on how long it takes to get a project done. You got Team A and Team B, see how long it takes. Because I, the only thing that scares me about the increase, you know, the half to eight to million and a half, is we're hearing about how everybody's cutting back, and a lot of people have gone fallow, which I mean, a lot of people haven't gone fallow. But, but with, at the same time, I worry about we're gonna have to bill that much money to cover our nut. And I just don't, I just, I worry about that, and so do the, and so do the farmers. Because, I mean, as we've said before, this isn't rocket science. It should be an easy process. We just, a very wise man told me the other day that government seems to take simple stuff and make it complicated. So I just, I want to make sure we're not doing that on the backs of our, and not just our farmers, our contractors, everybody that goes through those doors, so.
If I could, Chair, respond to that. I appreciate the comment, Supervisor Bone. One of the things, the advantages with a consultant, is that they only get paid for the work that they do. So when we start getting to a point where the workload decreases, we can terminate the contract or stop giving them work. And so then, it's not that we're going to definitely allocate or pay 1.5 million dollars, it's that we can spend up to that. Yeah. And, and so part of the rationale of consultants is to not overhire staff to get through the, the bubble of the permit processing that we have, knowing that we could expand to do that, but then we'd have to contract. So consultants allow us to do that without letting people off.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
I just have one last question. Throughout the state, do you know, are there planning departments in counties that don't have planners and just use consulting firms to run their department?
There, there are departments that do that. One of the things, though, that departments need is that there still needs to be people at the counter. And we allocate right now two full-time FTEs to just dealing with the counter, the phones, and email every single day. So there are some internal functions that really can't be done by outside consultant help.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the, I guess it would be a staff, it would be a recommendation.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If you're listening at home, please do press star nine so we know you want to speak. So, and then we'll go to those in the audience first. And welcome.
Kent Swawski, I have always strongly supported this concept. It's unfortunate, but all departments here, like Tom Mattson, the rest of Mactis Training Day for all the people out there who get trained, and then frequently move on to higher-paying jobs. That's just the way things are. Whereas this seems to be a very good solution for, for just about every single department you have here. One of the biggest boondoggles in many of the public's opinion is that the whole general plan should have been done, that we went through, should have been done by professionals who knew what they were doing. We had a training day thing, in my opinion, that lasted forever there. And we still need the consultants because part of the training day was, we never got the zoning done on the unclassified. There's a whole long list of deliverables and a time schedule that were supposed to be done on the general plan, which have just been cast aside, not to, I'm not blaming John Ford for that, but it's just amount of people and time. And, and so a lot of, a lot of the work out here needs to be delegated to, to experts in the field, and so we don't have the training day thing going on. As far as the cannabis permits go, a few things have been lacking in there with the consultants. We basically needed a format to get consistency out of all them. When things were presented to the public through an agendized items, it wasn't consistent. So hopefully, that will help, we will get that done on the permits, on all permitting, where we have templates, and the templates just get filled in for consistency. Then we're not calling in, pulling things off of consent on all different phases of what goes on in Planning Department there. So those templates are really important for all of us. It makes things easy to find, know what's there, and compare things. I strongly support this, and I strongly support you doing this whenever you can, be it whether through, through Rhodes Department. I don't know how we're gonna deal with, with the sheriff, we seem to have a dysfunction in that department at this time. And delegating this through consultants seems to be, in my opinion, to be an imperative way of moving forward and cutting costs, for all the reasons that you brought forward. I appreciate Rex there, I'm with his head like this while I'm speaking. I don't know if he's worshiping me or, or in a little pain, but thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. And anyone else? No, we'll go to those on the phone. Nikki, I see no hands.
No, madam chair.
Do we have anyone actually viewing today? Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure we're not, like, losing people. All right, so no speakers online, so we'll go back to the board. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to thank Director Ford for answering my questions.
All right, thank you. All right, did everyone get their vote tab? Yes. Yay, vote tab. All right, passes 5-0. Before we move on, I do want to let folks in the audience, Stephen, in specific, we are actually going to be doing the fair item. It's that's what you were here for, which I believe you are, this afternoon, after the 2:00 time set. We, we wanted to get people, I'm sorry, didn't, I wasn't able to give you a call, let, you know. All right, thanks. So I would like to ask CAO, between the two items, we have 10 minutes before, do you want to do the, what would you like us to do now? Would you like us to try to fit in one of the other items, or which, or go to the earlier closed session? What would you like?
I think we could accomplish item H2, if that is agreeable with you, Chair Bass. This is the grand jury report.
That's H1.
Oh, H1, I'm so sorry.
All right. That's all right. All right, so we will move on, welcome. I will do the grand jury report, which is H1, coming from the CAO's office.
Good morning, Chair Bass and members of the board. My name is Katia Gallardo, and I am the Public Information Specialist in the County Administrative Office. Before your board today is a response to the 2021-22 Grand Jury Report titled "Permitted Eventually." This report examines the county's existing cannabis permitting processes and discusses recommendations on how to improve them. Before discussing the findings and recommendations, as always, we want to express our gratitude to the members of the grand jury for their hard work that went into this report. The grand jury requested responses from the Directors of Public Works and Planning and Building, and also from your board. I will briefly summarize some of the proposed responses. Your board, as the appointing authority for the previously mentioned positions, may receive their responses and approve them, or modify them as you deem necessary. Regarding planning and building, the focus of the grand jury's findings and recommendations center around upgrading the Acela software system and providing additional noticing for applicants working towards the approval of their permits. The recommended response is that the upgrade to provide online payments will be implemented, and funding is available for this project. However, the grand jury's recommendation to create an additional public-facing porter, portal to Acela will not be implemented, as one currently exists, which already allows access to permit records. The recommendations to act on all interim permits upon receiving notice of approval or denial from the state will not be implemented, as local permits come before state licensing. And the recommendation to notify applicants pending more than 30 days of correction, corrective actions needed will not be implemented. Essentially, following the intake of an application, the application is set out for referral, at which point the Planning and Building Department provides a 30-day notice to applicants of information that is missing. Regarding Public Works, the focus of the grand jury's report was as follows. Number one, to upgrade the Acela software so Public Works has full access to the system. And two, Public Works should perform the verification of Category 4 roads in addition to self-certification. The recommended responses are that the upgrade will be implemented, and the department needs to identify additional funding. Department verification of Category 4 roads will not be implemented. Public Works has limited staff and does not have capacity to verify all roads. In addition, if issues arise there, they may come before the Planning Commission to address them. And regarding your board, the focus of this report was around approving funding for the Acela software upgrades, and staff recommends that that be implemented when funding is identified. And as I mentioned before, your board may approve or make changes to these recommended responses. And Directors Ford and Mattson are here and prepared to discuss this report in further detail with you if you have additional questions. And I'd like to thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Do you have any questions, anyone? Supervisor Bone?
Well, and I think the only thing is, I, I'd see Acela as mentioned twice, and I, I know you run into that, we run into that every once in a while. But it's only as good as the people that use it and put everything in there that needs to be put into it. And with the shortage of staff and whatever, I've had numerous occasions where we've had to go look at the paper file to get something that should have been in the cell and saved us a half hour. So you can upgrade it all you want, but if they don't use it right, it doesn't matter what you get. So there has to be a compromise there. Because I remember, we brought this on, it was gonna save all this time, and now we don't have people putting the proper input in. And for whatever reason, I'm not throwing stones or anything else, it's they're busy, and they've got this, and they don't know if somebody else is inputting it. But I think Director Ford, and I imagine Director Mattson will say, that inputs, 95% of it, if you don't put the input, it doesn't do you any good if you upgrade it. Because if you still don't put the input, there's nothing in there. So it's gonna have to be a meet in the middle where everybody will agree. If we upgrade these, we have to use the upgrades.
Any other supervisors? Supervisor Wilson?
I just want to thank the grand jury for their work, but really what's here today is the reports that were delivered by Planning and Public Works. And I want to just say that the discussion that they put forth, and the explanations, and the proposals for action seemed reasonable and cogent, and I just appreciate you guys doing, doing the work. Thanks.
Anyone else? Supervisor Bushnell?
I'll just make a motion that we accept the report.
Second.
Motion and a second. We'll go to those in the audience first for public comment. Welcome.
I would like to thank your staff for making a very nice, good, clear presentation today. I think that's one of her first ones I've heard, and that always bodes well when the first one they have, they're not clutching up. I've had some of your people get, like, they're auctioning something off. It was nice to hear. The, as usual, I have a little bit of angst with how few of the recommendations are actually being followed through after all the work that the grand jury did do. A lot of it says, we'll do it when we have funding. Okay, that's, it's a nice response, but I would like to hear, hear instead of response coming from the board, this sounds like an important thing, your staff saying we'll do it when we get funding. Now, how do we get the funding there to implement the grand jury's thing? That's your job, probably, obviously, to move money around or find some other way. Of course, as Rex said, the information's only as good as the input, as far as that goes, but it's kind of imperative that you have the information. It's the same thing as using paper time cards rather than using automated things. It does take a while, it does train, take a while to train people to put the information in and understand how imperative it is to cut back our overall cost. If we don't have the information, we can't function in an effective and cost-effective manner. Again, I wish that some, some of these things had been paid attention to, such as Category 4 has been a really major problem, self-certification out there for the cannabis permits. Self-certification's an interesting term. Those of us in construction that like to be able to self-certify everything we're gonna do on a project on the same level, cannabis gets to do theirs, and, and that would just be nice, that we could just say, hey, we're, we're okay. Don't pay any attention to the man. When these things are actually checked out, it's not uncommon for people to find there's problems. It's not uncommon for the neighbors to come in and, and say, hey, the road is not this category. It's not uncommon for the people to come in and say, hey, they don't belong to a road association, and they're the ones tearing up the roads. So these kind of things really should be paid attention to. I think a lot of the cannabis permits will be null and void. I really had a problem, and I didn't understand the reason why, if the state has decided the interim permits are no longer to be allowed, which is my understanding, there was a cutoff, why we're moving forward with interim permits. And it's, there's some, something that I don't quite understand. I'll talk to John Ford about that a little bit later. So thank you for my opportunity to speak on, on what the grand jury is doing. And, and again, I, I really appreciate their work, and I just always feel like sometimes it's been a little bit discounted in the responses they get from the board and from the departments. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. So I do not see any hands up in, on those in the video. All right, so we'll go back to the board. I see Director Ford did come up to the table, so I wanted to give you an opportunity.
Thank you, Chair Bass. I, I just wanted to clarify some things that are heard in the public comment. Number one, it is true, the state is not issuing new provisional licenses, but they are renewing existing provisional licenses. So our existing interim permit holders can continue to operate at the state level with a provisional license, provided they already had, had one before July 1st. So I just want to make sure that's clear. And then I also want to make it clear that we're not saying that we're not doing some things that are recommended by the grand jury. Some of the recommendations we're already working towards, so we're not implementing what they had identified, because we're already moving in that path. And, and so it's a little bit nuanced there, I apologize for that, but we are working hard to, to try to basically achieve many of the things that the grand jury brought up.
Thank you, Director Ford. Supervisor Bone?
And it would be a good time to thank our finance team and our CAO team, because we're catching up. So instead of saying when we get money, because we have no idea, we're actually seeing a little light at the end of the tunnel. We don't know if it's an oncoming train, but we're actually digging ourselves out from a mess that paper time cards or anything didn't count. It's just, we've got a mess, and financially, it's hard to spend money when you don't know how much you got in your pocket. So I appreciate everything they're doing to get that buttoned up for us, so we can go back to operating as a whole-body county.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Unfortunately, I was gonna say, it's easy to spend money when you don't have money in your pocket. That's what gets you in trouble. So I appreciate our team being very careful in that respect. Any other supervisors? We have a motion, we have a second. I guess we're ready to vote? Maybe we are ready to vote. We got a frozen screen over here, so how about a roll call?
I'll do a roll call. Supervisor Bone?
I'm on.
Okay, perfect. Motion passes 5-0.
All right, so, so we do have the 9:30 time sets. So if I go to our interim county council, we're not gonna do, I want, I've been asked by the CAO to move to the closed-session items, because we do have someone at 9:30 that we need to get to. Is that correct? Okay, so county council, interim county council, Miles, if you read the first two into the record, then by the time you get to the one that's time set, we'll be just on time.
Thank you, Chair Bass. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957, in order to consider public employee appointment for the position of the Agricultural Commissioner. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1, in order to discuss existing litigation in the case of People of the State of California et al. versus Karen Paz Dominguez et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2200584. And finally, it is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Codes Sections 54954.5 and 54957, in order to consider public employee appointment for the position, for the position of the county surveyor.
Thank you. So we will go to public comment on those items, and we'll go to those in the public first, I mean, with us. Welcome.
As a matter of clarification here, approximately, how long do you think this will take? And I think you only, you have time certain for not one of those items you called, so you'll be doing something also after you do that, that we will wait around for. So again, you're educated, E-WAG educated, while I ask guests as far as time would be appreciated, and that will enable us all. Appreciate the fact that you did let the people know to come back for 2:00 regarding that. I know the person came in here, and he was kind of, didn't know where he was at, where it was originally. That clarity is always a great thing to do, Virginia. So anybody who's gonna be chair in the future, I hope will learn those kind of things and help the public kind of steer them through the process, because they are quite confused out there sometimes.
All right, thank you. And I see no hands up on, online?
That's correct.
All right, so I was curious, because the 9:30 is a time set, and then we are having two other items we would like to accomplish. Do you have?
I hesitate to...
two other items we would like to accomplish. Do you have... I hesitate to ask, do you have an estimate?
Yeah, this is like not a skill set of mine, but I would anticipate we will likely return around 11:00 or 11:30.
Likely. Okay. Sounds reasonable.
Can I...
Yeah. Yes.
Clarification. So we're doing the interviews and then something else in closed session? We'll hear the interviews, and then we'll take the two non-time set closed session items. We have an attorney who is only available in the morning. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So then we will adjourn to closed session. We're going to go in order of where we stopped, and that means we're going to the item coming from Human Resources about diversity, equity, and inclusion definitions, et cetera. Welcome, Dr. Clark. Oh, I CIO's office. Do I go to you first just to introduce them, or do I do anything? Just go straight to Jeremy?
Yeah. Oh, Interim Director O'Hanlon. I'm sorry. I was talking to Sean.
Hello, board members. Is this thing on? Is this thing on?
Yes, Zach.
Yeah. So I just wanted to give a little brief kind of introduction. As the interim HR director, I felt, you know, giving my support of this was extremely important. I don't want to take away from Dr. Clark and Neftali's presentation, though, so I'll make it pretty brief. So your board directed the Office of Human Resources to do a DEI evaluation, and they're going to go into the specifics of all that and kind of an overview. But I myself participated as not in my current role as the interim Human Resources Director, so I did see parts of the process. And although I didn't participate in this role up to this point, I just wanted to let you know that I am very much supportive of DEI work in the HR department, as I know your board is. Even though we have been strained with, you know, COVID and payroll transition, I do think it's really important that we carve out time for DEI work. It's here, and it's something we need to be working on continuously. It's also important that I think we set the standard, because we're the largest public agency in our county, to set the standard for DEI. I know there's other agencies that are working on it, but we are, I think, the gold standard when it comes to public agencies around here. So we really should be the ones that are setting the stage. And I think this presentation and the staff report is a really, really good first step. I know we've looked at some of the data, but this is really the first step towards actually taking some action. So with that, in some of the data in here, it may be a little difficult for leadership to hear, just being very blunt about it. You know, this is the perspectives of our organization. So but I think it's good to bring that up and let everyone know and hear it, and then start taking steps to work on these things. So with that, again, that's my short spiel in support of this. I want to hand it over to Dr. Clark and Neftali Rubio Mills to give you a presentation.
Thank you.
That's on.
All right. There we go. Well, again, thank you for the kind words and for your support. Interim Director O'Hanlon, my name is Jeremy Clark. I work in Human Resources as a project manager. My responsibilities are really myriad, but typically include diversity, equity, and inclusion from an org-wide standpoint, and being the director's lead for that, and also supporting CIO Hayes in these areas as well. And I'm here today with?
Hi, Chair Bass and members of the board. Thanks so much for your time today.
Your microphone might need...
Is that a little better? Okay, great. Thank you. I am Neftali Miller Rubio, and I am the Racial Equity Manager for the Department of Health and Human Services. I also serve on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Focus Team, which is part of Great Workplace, and I am co-presenting today. So thank you so much for your time.
All right. So just for a little bit of background about this. So this whole process sort of started about two years ago, when your board provided direction to our office to identify strategies to promote and increase diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so from that period, from last July through about last August, we spent a lot of time with former Director Lee and myself, sort of engaging in stakeholder engagement, developing a framework that was going to guide our approach to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and then also having conversations with external stakeholders and partners as well. Around August of 2021, that's when we released the inaugural Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Survey in our agency. From August to December, we sort of just processed that data, really performed some thematic analysis, and held some sessions, review sessions, with open to any and all staff that wanted to participate. So we rolled out those results. And then now, today is really the culmination of this process and us asking your board to take some critical actions around DEI. So the objective for today is not really going to be to review those assessment highlights, because that's already largely been done. The assessment results are public. I encourage everyone to go and view those. But really just present your board with some assessment highlights, provide a little bit of a glimpse as to what the lived experience is here at the County of Humboldt. That really influenced the design of our assessment, and so it's important that we share that with your board today, present some specific foundational actions to your board for consideration, and then, of course, answer any questions you may have. So I want to begin by just summarizing our assessment, because this really was a big deal. And so these are some highlights from our assessment. I'm not going to read them all, but I'll just touch on a couple of them. Essentially, in the assessment, staff sort of told us that we've got some work to do in this area. That wasn't really surprising, considering that we don't have a lot of formal initiatives that are underway. And with the support of your board, that's something that we hope to change. But the assessment results reveal that there is a trust deficit that exists between respondents and senior leadership. We also, certain populations reported disparate organizational experiences as well, and our staff crave education around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so that was really, really promising, and we hope today to sort of lay the foundation for that to occur. I do want to talk to you about the assessment sample. So we got data from multiple sources. You see that we had 818 respondents to the electronic survey. That equates to about a 40% adjusted response rate, and that means if we remove the extra help population, if we remove the population of staff on leave of absence. So that is a pretty, pretty good, it's a darn good, excuse me, response rate, and we're very confident in those results. We also, our consultant conducted 13 department head interviews. Again, very good response rate and participation rate from that population, and then three focus groups with a total of 13 respondents. And so all of these methods of data collection together really provided us with an accurate glimpse into our agency. So as I sort of go through these, my hope is that you'll really spend more time sort of paying attention to the text box, because that's what's going to reflect an actual comment from an employee and give you some insights into the lived experience. But when we asked the respondents if the leadership of the County of Humboldt encourages diversity, about 40% responded positively, either strongly agreed or agreed with that. That's not a bad number, but ideally, we would like that number to be in the 70s or 80s. We see the neutral measures on this were quite, the neutral responses, excuse me, were quite high at about 41%. So we've got, you know, some work to do there in this area. If we look at career development, when we asked respondents if employees from different backgrounds were encouraged to apply for higher positions, again, we're at about that 40% mark that responded in the positive. We'd ideally like that number to be in the 70s or 80s. When we ask about the policy environment and whether the policies and procedures at the county encourage diversity, again, we're at about that 40% mark that either agrees or strongly agrees. But again, we also have some work to do there. And then when we ask the question around supervision and training, this is a really bright spot. When we asked respondents whether their supervisor was committed to and supports diversity, equity, and inclusion, we see that that number is about 76%, approaching 80%. So what that tells us is that whereas this trust deficit may exist with senior leadership, there really is a lot of equity, so to speak, with the immediate supervisor. And so that immediate supervisor will definitely be a resource that we want to leverage as we move forward with these DEI initiatives. So that's sort of a couple of highlights from the DEI assessment. Again, I encourage everyone to read. And now Neftali's going to talk a little bit about workplace culture and the link there.
Great. Thank you. And so, as he said, I just wanted to link between the research that's been done through the assessment and also through the different assessments that we had through the Great Workplace Culture Change Initiative, with some of the recommendations we brought with you, were brought to you today. So thinking about workplace culture and how we can sort of make these shifts is we really want to focus on meeting people where they are. Some people do not have the lived experience or have had the conversations relating to race inequity in the workplace that others have. And so this might feel really new to some, and it might feel like we are very behind the times to others. And so we want to be able to create sort of a baseline understanding of the concepts and the terms, so everyone can kind of move forward together as one organization, and being able to institutionalize the commitment to DEI that we've been talking about and focusing on so far. So I've not used a clicker recently, so I'm going to have to try to be coordinated. So bear with me. It's okay. I think I got. Thank you. So building that inclusive culture, building the competency and capacity amongst staff, really requires that shared understanding of language. So information and meaning and relationships, they all play off of each other, and how staff see themselves, how staff see leadership, and how that level of trust is exchanged between those groups and really with the community as well. The terms we're talking about are diversity, so thinking about difference or variety in a given group. Equity, so access and fair treatment. Inclusion, feeling welcome and welcoming in others. Implicit bias, which can be unconscious. It's often based in stereotype. When I say peanut butter, you think jelly. And so when you think about the interactions between humans, that can be like particularly harmful in that dynamic. Talking about microaggressions. So these are everyday subtle expressions. They can be unintentional, verbal or nonverbal, and often are by nature derogatory. So as I said, these definitions came out of the organizational assessment and conversations directly with staff in both that and the Culture Change Initiative that has been going on since 2020. So some of the professional development proposals that we have for you today involve three kind of key things. There is proposing a new training to be adopted for all staff. This training introduces these key concepts. It's skill building. It establishes that baseline I talked about. It's currently in use at the Department of Health and Human Services. About 75% of staff have taken it and responded positively. I think that's a really great marker that it's being received well. It is serious concepts, but it's relatable. It's done in a fun way. And it was an in-house production, so I just wanted to give a shout out that that was something that was created entirely from staff and has been really well received. And with 75% at DHHS, that's like a third of the county already there. So the next proposal is following that training. Staff will have three hours of self-directed training to pursue those years after. And so that really gives opportunities for expanded learning, really just continued exploration to go a little deeper and broader into these topics. And all of that will be available through NeoGov for staff, so very easily accessible. The third thing would be the webpage. So we would like a public-facing webpage on our website and also the staff-facing Intranet on HumNet. This will be a vehicle for information sharing and accountability tool, and really a resource repository, because DEI work isn't only happening in DHHS or in HR, that we want to be able to link those resources and have people know one place that they can go to find them. So those three things will be pretty key in bringing staff forward in this working conversation. And I just wanted to highlight, before I switch it back to Jeremy, is that all of this work really is in service of your board's strategic objectives. These include developing strategies that harness the benefits of diversity, inclusion, which came out in the 2020 agenda item that Supervisor Bone sponsored, as well as the strategic framework, which talks about providing community-appropriate levels of service and investing in county employees. So thank you. I'll hand it back. There you go.
Thank you. All right. So the next item, and actually Neftali's talk about her connection to strategy was really, really pertinent, and I want to take a second to sort of highlight this, because the recommendations that we make today are really intended to be foundational in that they will serve as the basis for us to build on future diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives in the future. And why are we doing that? And it's important to consider that, and that's largely because, like the country, like a lot of different areas, the country is becoming more diverse, the County of Humboldt is becoming more diverse, and as we draw our talent from the increasingly diverse community, then the agency becomes more diverse. And so I say that to highlight that community-level appropriate services look different, depending on what the composition of the community look like. And I think that's really, really critical. So what you see here today is a diversity framework. Now, normally, what we would like to see done is have diversity, equity, and inclusion, have that commitment be demonstrated in the strategic framework, and then institutionalized through all that we do. Because the board's current strategic framework runs from 2019 through 2024, and it takes time to develop that, rather than try to integrate DEI into the existing strategic framework, what we did was created a diversity framework to sort of go alongside it, in hopes that that can be integrated into the new strategic framework that is developed by your board. So I just want to take a second to share this with you. This is the diversity framework that we commonly refer to as the SEAL. It seeks to sort of marry the Great Workplace Culture Change Initiative that we have going on now. And that's where you see the professionalism, the teamwork, the service, the communication. These are all core values that were derived from that process. We also see, you see that diversity, equity, and inclusion is sort of the soil, if you will, that is, produces the pillars or makes the trees grow to achieve the accomplishment of your board's strategic objectives. And so that is what it's really meant to sort of encapsulate here, and I am quite proud of it. Shout out to Vanessa and the CIO's office for hard work on this. Let's see. Wow. Okay. So you have to bear with us for a second, just because there is a rather long thank you list. So in addition to Interim Director O'Hanlon, CIO Hayes, Vanessa Erickson, Anne from County Council's office, Goldie from County Council's office, the Racial Equity Team of DHHS, Director Beck, the Office of Human Resources, a lot of time and energy went into this. And so I just wanted to make sure we were able to give them a shout out. And with that, we are done and are happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you. That was a lot packed in there. Any questions, comments from the board? Supervisor Madron?
Yes. Thank you to that long list of incredible folks that put all the effort into this. I think it's fantastic. And, you know, it really comes at a great time. We made the effort last year to bring all of our employees up in wages and equity adjustments. You know, these are all pieces to the puzzle. It's like we can offer all the training we want in the world, but if folks are still not feeling valued, they're not going to engage, right? So it all kind of has to work together. And I actually think that, you know, with this 85% or 15% or higher vacancy rate in all our departments, it'd be really neat if the county was like the place to work, right? If we had the decade of the employee, you know, along with this great workplace initiative, to where literally we were the place that people really wanted to go and work. And that requires appropriate wages and equity considerations, along with facilities, you know, the workplace environment that people work in and all those things. So we have a long way to go, but this is such a crucial piece to that. So thank you for your work in that. Something I hear a lot is people talk about the gold standard, and just, you know, we often don't think about the words we use. You talked about it in here of implicit bias. If you think about it, the gold standard, for our area in particular, with all the native community, which is a very large piece of our diversity, gold was exactly what, you know, brought the people here to kill off their tribes and their people, and, you know, all kinds of horrible things happened with genocide and the rest of it. So I always try to encourage people every time I hear that, don't use the gold standard, especially locally. You could use the salmon standard, which is a totem species for the native tribes, or other things. But it is something to be aware of. I don't fault you at all for it. We do it all the time. We say these things. But just to be aware, you know, the words we use and how that may make a lot of native people feel not included. Just the simple use of one word, you know, gold. So again, thank you for your hard work. I look forward to implementing all of this and working with our board and our community to really make the county the place to work because of things like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else at this time? Okay, we're going to wait for public comment. If you are listening to this and you wish to comment on this item, please do press star nine so we know you're there. Nikki, I don't have my Zoom up here, so if you have anybody else, like from staff who are on there, let me know. So welcome. We'll go to those here first.
Kent Sowoski, I find this interesting. I did notice the negativity on these things was very, very low. You were hitting 80% just about on everything of people who didn't seem to see there's a big problem here. So I don't know if it's as broken as some people think. I know in this day and age, you have to be very careful what you say because... think. I know in this day and age, you have to be very careful what you say, because normal communication is, can be taken in the wrong way by people. And being an older person, a lot of things that were common speech, things that are patterned into me for my whole life are now taboo. You can't use them because somebody's offended. That makes life a little bit difficult for all of us. My major concern on this thing, and I don't know what the end result you're looking for, I do want people to feel comfortable in the workspace. They need to feel that. That's very important for them. This microaggression, I know you can have two people of the same gender, same everything, and yet that microaggression goes on between them because they don't like each other, or they found something they don't like about their work attitude. So it's a real common. I worry about the major aggression things. I don't want county staff going in and throwing the F-bomb at staff and things like that. Those are the things I think really need to be worked on, are the major ones. The one fear I do have, and I don't know whether it's an intention to go here, would be to cause equity to happen by setting percentages and things. In other words, would you, are we contemplating going into the tax collector's office and saying, you're all female employees in here, we're going to go ahead and you have to have 49% males in here, you know, as far as setting certain guidelines? That, to me, I like to go into situations and like to say, everybody go in with your hands closed, you know, you're not, any of these things come into situation. You look at the person's skills and base your evaluation on the person's skills, not on any of these other factors. But that's how I'd like to see hiring. So I don't know if there's some intention where we're going to eventually set up those specifics that would cause things to change and seem to be not broken. I know a lot of these departments get along very well. DHHS has one of the most diversified departments, because it has half the employees probably. So anyway, I have no problem with the training. I think it's a great thing, especially regarding the aggression parts that happen within normal working things, and people can maybe work getting along and being a little bit more friendly to their coworkers. That's a lot better working relationship. Also, I still also strongly support that the Auditor Controller's Office get moved to someplace they have windows. That's a nice thing to have, as far as that goes. So thank you for opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. And, I don't see anyone else here? Is there anyone on the phone?
Yeah, it looks like Ash just raised his hand. He's 0116.
Okay, yes. So Ash, this is, this item is not, he might be doing this for public comment. This item is about our diversity, equity, and inclusion item. So if you want to make a comment on this, now would be the time to press star six to unmute.
Okay, that's just, so is the public comment on non-agenda still at 1:30, or did that get moved again?
No, it should be in just a few minutes.
Okay, I'll just wait for that then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that you see? All right, so we'll go back to the board, and Supervisor Wilson?
I'll make a motion, if that's all right. So I'll start with the motion in front of us, which is to adopt the Foundation of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Microaggression, and Intersectionality, and two, to add Exploring Racial Equity Common Terms Course to the County's mandatory training list. Number three, require three hours of diversity training to all county staff, including us. I want to make sure that we're included in that. Adopt the Humboldt County Diversity Framework SEAL, which we saw before, which was very nice. I actually liked that a lot. And direct the Office of Human Resources to establish the necessary website presence dedicated to county diversity initiatives and data.
Your second?
Second motion.
All right.
And if I may speak to the motion, that'd be great. I really appreciate the work that you all have been doing on this. The meetings that I've had with staff with relationship to this, and the updates that I've been getting have been both eye-opening and encouraging. And I want to, I want to thank you guys for really doing this. This is hard work. And as was mentioned by public comment, some of it's uncomfortable, some of it's, and a lot of it is a learning experience. And as one of my favorite people in the world, Dolly Parton once said, "When you know better, you do better." And, and so a lot of this is really just really taking in information about DEI work that has to be done, not just as an institution, but within ourselves and within our community. And so the work that we do here will really reflect, and really, it will, it will project into the community and into ourselves. And I just want to really appreciate that work and understand that it's, while we might seek that, that place, we're, it's really, we're on that journey. It's, it's, we're not perfect at any, and we don't start in a perfect place. None of us do. And so I really appreciate this work to help move us in that direction. And so with that, recommending it.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson. And good to know that I'm not the only one that turns to Dolly Parton for advice on modern day life.
Words of inspiration. So I just, to echo on, all the work you've put into it, and it didn't seem like it'd take, you know, it's been that long ago since we started going through this. I think it's great that the county is leading the way, and maybe, you know, being a good example for others. But it's pretty exciting work, very interesting reading, and I've been sharing it with other people, so.
Thank you Supervisor Bass. And your board, I mean, this all could not have happened without the leadership of your board. And I also have to say, CAO Hayes has been wonderful. In my job, I have the pleasure of working, I work for Zach, but I have the pleasure of working closely with CAO Hayes. And I can say that both of these leaders have contributed greatly to this, and it would not have been possible. So we're thankful to all of, each and every one of you.
Thank you. And Supervisor Bushnell and Bone?
I just want to thank you for the presentation. Early on, when I was elected, I got the opportunity to have an interview and talk with you about this. It was really interesting. And thanks to all involved.
Supervisor Bone?
So we're basically on the two-year anniversary of this, so I want to thank you guys, since we have a theme for working eight to five, nine to five, so, you know. But anyway, as we move forward, yeah, thanks. I mean, there's, there's a lot we can do. I, the numbers didn't bother me, because I, I think the neutral numbers are yes. I mean, some people just don't want to answer a question. I think it was said earlier, they don't want to make a commitment. You know, they're the same people that can't go to a buffet because they weighed 90 pounds at the end of the month. So they just can't make a decision. So I, I think, I take that as a positive, because if they had a negative, they'd let you know. But they just, so I don't think the numbers are that good. I think we're making some headway, and I appreciate that. So, and I appreciate all the work you guys have done on this.
Thank you Supervisor Bone.
All right, I think we're ready to vote. Oh, I voted.
Mine came up. Rex is up.
Would you like me to do a roll call on this while you sign back in, and then the next item?
I see fingers going like crazy here.
Okay, I'll do a roll call to go through. Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Absolutely.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now for those who are listening and not here in person, this is, we're getting to the time to make comment on items that are not on the agenda. So press star nine, so we know that you're there. And that'll be three minutes, a strict three minutes for everyone. And let everyone know, after that, we will do the first public hearing item. We're trying to get back on track on the, on the list there, so. And we will get there. All right, so we have three people that have signed up first. And so if you want to stand by the side of the room, we've got Mr. Wilson, Genevieve, and Diana. So if you three want to come to the side of the road and come on up, I think Charles, you're first. So it's your turn to come up. Items not on the agenda.
My name is Charles Wilson. You've been working on this climate change guilt program, and I thought I'd just comment on a few of the things there. One of the basic, well, actually, the primary means of transportation is walking. Now, I'm a pedestrian. I've walked for 19 years. I started out when I was three years old, walking two miles with my mother to the bus zone change, so that we only had to pay five cents instead of 10 cents. When I was down in Los Angeles in 34 years, I walked to work, except for five times when I took my car. I was shot at twice, three bullets, all missed, six dogs attacked. I hopped up on a Volkswagen one time and waved my wallet at him with those big teeth, waited for him to go away. Two other guys got hit by cars. I almost got hit. Another guy I heard got hit, he died. So, you know, there's problems with pedestrians. But in Humboldt County, essentially, you have a series of communities. It's sort of like pearls on a necklace. They're nice little communities, they're all tied together by Caltrans with their highway. There's no other way to go between these communities. You have to go across a bridge. I don't want to swim the Mad River. I don't want to swim the Eel River and all that kind of stuff. So the, Caltrans has control of this little string that ties together all the communities. Now, Caltrans essentially now has a policy, it's been, has for about 30 years now, of posting pedestrian prohibited signs on the highway. They let bicycles go. The last bicyclist director of Caltrans made sure of that. But the thing is, pedestrians cannot walk on the highway. So the thing is, it took me 27 years to get them to put a pedestrian crossing on the Mad River. And now Caltrans Sacramento policy says you're supposed to have a safe alternative pedestrian route. Federal funding policy says that, state law says that. So the thing is, they're supposed to have a means of getting between communities by walking, not by bicycles or by cars, but by walking. And like I say, well, it took 21 years to get them to take down the signs going from McKinleville to Trinidad. But, you know, these kind of things shouldn't have to be, I shouldn't have to tell them about it. They should, they should do it themselves. Anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you, Charles. Nikki, is our, I didn't do the 30 second. Do we have a, did it, would it, is this, oops, sorry. Just want to make sure we get this set up before we go to those on the phone.
I'll have it set up. This one doesn't have the alarm. I just didn't push the button on time.
Oh, oh, it's, no, okay. No, I know the secret. All right, thank you. Hi, Genevieve, welcome.
Hello, this is Genevieve Wilson, and nice to see you all again. Time flies, right? Okay, but anyway, I just want to leave, in the future, what's going on, hopefully you make a true decision and pay on the facts. One thing, I talk to a lot of people, I got an experience, a Mexican lady, she worked three jobs during the pandemic, two years, taking care of a single mom. She worked all this time, she don't, she refused to take the shot, but she was able to take it. I mean, without keeping a job without taking it, and he was fine, no problem. But now, I think masks and everything in Los Angeles is coming back. And they say, in two weeks, you're going to wear a mask. How can we predict in two weeks, you're going to wear a mask, right? And then people know, one person had two day, the child had two times with pneumonia, and gets sick with all the time wearing a mask. We need to wake up and think for ourselves. That's all I can say. So anyway, I was going to tell you, there's a, we all, everybody, different places, we come here to run away from tyranny, right? So right now, if we have become a tyranny country, where are we going to run to? The moon? And also, I learned today, there's a, from some place, the rules for the life, for seven rule, you can apply to the COVID. Number one, let it go. And then number two, ignore them. Number three, is take time. Then you see what happened when people take the uninvestigative jab. And then the number four, don't compare. Don't let, don't compare with the Joneses. They want to take it, go ahead. You don't take it. And then number five is say, is stay calm, whatever you decide. And then number five is, it's all on you. We are basing our decision to make our decision for life or happiness. So keep on the track and smile. Life is too short. It looks like a week fly by again. So smile and enjoy the moment, past, learn from the past. Enjoy the moment, and the future, we have to prepare. Get your food ready and whatever, if you have a generator. Now I'm going to sing you my new song, okay? Take off the, "Don't Cry For Me, Argentina. Don't Cry For Me, America. I'll do my best to keep you from tyranny and hatred. With all my sincerity and my courage and love, we will have life, liberty, and pursue happiness from now on, last forever and more." And also, it is saying, "Love will prevail. Tyranny will fail." Okay? So that I'm going to tell you. And hurry, we will succeed. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And another book, this book is really good, Pandemic by Alex Berghamson.
Thank you. I was going to say, my kids used to say I had eyes in the back of my head, but I seriously don't, Nikki. So keep an eye, for those who are here, keep an eye, because it's a strict three minutes, so welcome. You must be Diana.
Hi, guys. Thank you. I'm just going to play a little video, and then I'm going to speak.
All elected representatives work for we, the people. They are accountable to us and are required to follow law and proper form. When law and proper form are not followed, it is maladministration and a crime which can and should be punished. The people themselves have a duty to hold our representatives accountable for their actions. It is up to us to make sure justice prevails. The people have a right to alter, reform, or abolish government as needed to bring it back to a position of strength and prosperity. A road to recovery. It is up to us, the general people, the ones with all political power, to collectively get together, either by county or district.
Okay, so that's from Truth Tornado, and that is for, I'm really using this time to speak to Humboldt County residents, because you people clearly don't listen and haven't been listening to us for over two years. And so I've brought a lawful notice for you all today, and it will be an affidavit next time, which will be filed under court of record. And it's basically a demand to be free from your federal, state, and corporate interference. Truth Tornado is the YouTube channel I encourage all of Humboldt County to get familiar with. We are the ones with all the power. It's not these people in these elevated seats here. This is our job. This falls on us. They are not listening to us. They are hell-bent on destroying the mom and pops here, taking our parking lot away from the Lost Coast Brewery, and Vern's Furniture, and putting Earth Center Transit Station up. $31 million for 31 units for your doctors and nurses traveling, so they can pay $3,000 and $4,000 a month. Your 79-cent permit to $4.79 proposal. Everything this Board of Supervisors has done in Humboldt County has been to destroy our mom and pop communities here. It's sad to me. And from what I've experienced from this COVID, from March of 2020, being separated from my daughter at the hospital, my son arrested at Safeway, watched my friends be arrested for not wearing masks, children being abused, children being coerced, children being injured, and this media here doesn't ever share our point of view, our stand-up people. We have something to say. And they do a really good job of censoring us and keeping our viewpoints quiet. And I've just had it. And I want the people of Humboldt County to study up on Truth Tornado and what our rights are, and also look up the case out of Santa Rosa, Michelle Ford, State Assembly, Head of California Crimes Against Humanity, number 220125009. Every one of these people here is guilty of this. Who's going to accept this for me today, please? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Diana. And I think we now have Kenton. If there's anyone that would like to comment on items not on the agenda, I don't think anyone here is. All right, welcome Kenton, then we'll go to the phone.
So I just, a lot of the things this last speaker was speaking about transpired, it sounds like in the city of Eureka, some of those things not. But I can understand the angst. It still emanates through the community as far as these people's opinions and how they feel that they've been mistreated. And it's sad that this, this thing has brought so many people in the contention with each other, you know. I think we all want to be safe and well and have choices for what we want to do with our lives. I spoke before, and I'm going to kind of back off a few things. I'm a strong believer in karma, and I believe karma will take care of a lot of things we have here. People who have engaged in things which are selfish, or things of that nature, karma has a tendency to come back and bite people. And I'll just let karma, karma roll on as it rolls on. We have some major decisions here. We'll be speaking a little bit later, I think, about some, some decisions on some tax items. And we have a lot of things we need to fix within the county, and a lot of things we need to do with funding, and possibly redirecting funding and focusing on money. As we all know, the county is not in exceptionally good shape. The only thing saving it now is we're not paying 15% of our The only thing saving it now is, is we're not paying 15% of our positions to be filled by workers. If we were paying them, we'd really be down in a hole. We can't get the workers, so we're kind of in a catch-22. But 15% of your workforce, when that's, your workforce is the majority of our cost within the county, is a big deal. And it's sad to see that we're not able to fund them. I see a tendency within the county, attempts by the department heads to keep their employees, and I can understand this, basically going ahead and the ones they do have that are good, moving them up the pay scales, moving them up to the jobs where they earn a little bit more within the guidelines, following what is legally done within the county. And, and I do support the people in those positions, taking their people who are doing exceptional jobs and promoting them into the positions where they can have more of a living wage. So, I think I'll leave it at that for today. I, I find the United States a little bit more, I guess, a little bit, getting more and more dysfunctional. Our infrastructure is failing rather rapidly in all departments. Such things as the gas tax should have been raised many years ago. That's why our roads are no longer in good shape. So, anyway, we can all work together, maybe, to try and fix some things. I'll be happy to work with anybody, anybody at the dais who I might have problems with on one thing. I'm always willing to set aside when we have a common cause and work together. That's called, that's called a politician when they can do that. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you. So, I know we had a hand up, and now it's gone down. So, if you are listening, watching on video, and you're wanting to make comment, press star nine, because the hand disappeared. Was it, was it, is that the only one? All right. So, you said 0116. It's your turn.
Ash Keeter, can you hear me?
Yes.
Today, I wanted to speak on the dangers of the global world government. Recently, Joe Biden had spoke that, I think it referred to as the liberal world order. And previously, I remember George Bush Senior talking about the New World Order. And I believe Clinton also said it, and so did Barack Obama and George Bush Junior, you know, it's, it's not really been a quiet thing. But anyways, here's Rand Paul speaking of the same dangers of a one-world government.
The real danger is this. Look how bad your government is in a country where you get to vote for these people. This would be a government, a world government, where you don't get to vote on anybody. This is everybody's worst nightmare. The bureaucracy that we have troubled our United States, because we don't get to vote on that, we vote indirectly. Can you imagine the one-world bureaucracy of all these elitists and their private jets that would rule our, our country, and we wouldn't get to vote? So, I'm dead set against this. And I used to call people and talk about one-world government. I used to say, "Oh, it's a conspiracy." We would always say, "No, it's in their mission statement." They'd say it at every meeting. That's what they're for. But lack of sovereignty makes lack of freedom. It makes lack of responsiveness, and it's completely antithetical to everything our country stands for. But it's not only insensitivity, because they've never been to a grocery store and have no idea what things cost, but it's also that we now have a whole set of our political spectrum that's out there saying it's caused by greed. If you were in a third grade, third grade class, I would give you a failing grade if you told me inflation was caused by greed. That is the dumbest explanation that rose to implausible, and now lacking all facts, that someone would try to put forward. Inflation caused, is caused by an increase in the money supply. It increases the demand. It's done because we spend too much money. The Federal Reserve prints it up to borrow it. It floods the economy and drives prices up. If you don't understand that, they'll never get it any better. And my prediction is, it's going to get a lot worse, but whatever. Privacy is not much of a concern to these kind of people. So, not only do they want to track you for your carbon footprint, the WHO has announced, you know, they're forming a treaty, and it's going to be a treaty for the next pandemic. But in the next pandemic, it's not going to be a Washington-based mandate on vaccines or Washington-based social distancing or masks. It's going to be an international one. And they actually want to track everybody with a QRS code. But whenever they talk about it, they have absolutely no concern for privacy. And you're exactly right. They don't care about the individual. They don't know people like us. They've never been on a bus. They've never been on Southwest. They're like, they've never driven a car. Most of them have never even driven their own car. So, these are not the kind of people who want to tell the rest of us what to do. All right. Senator Rand Paul from Kentucky. Flash commercial.
All right. Thank you very much, Ash. Three minutes goes fast. I don't see any other hands up, do you? All right. Well, then, we'll move on to our next part of this. We're going to go to the first public hearing, and prior, and it comes to us from Planning and Building, and it's regarding a lot line adjustment. But I'm going to ask Interim County Council Miles to introduce the ordinance.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Currently before the board is an ordinance amending Section 311-7 of the Humboldt County Code by rezoning property in the Corbell area, PLN-2021-16919 Blanc.
All right. Thank you. So, at this point, I'm opening the public hearing. I do see Supervisor Bone has his, no. Okay. You can ask, sure.
Director Ford, I mean, I'd, I love to hear your guys' presentations and everything else. But this is kind of a no-brainer, small lot line adjustments between two willing partners that just want to clean something up on the road, right?
This is actually a lot line adjustment. The answer, your short answer to your question is yes. It just does involve relocating the zoning boundaries for TPZ. That's why it needs to come to the board.
So, there's actually going to be a gain of TPZ, and there's a little three acres of ag, but, and this is no way to facilitate cannabis growing whatsoever, because it will not qualify.
Can I just make a motion to accept staff recommendation?
Well, you can. I don't, I know that there's other questions as well, but you, we can have a motion in a second and have the discussion, or?
And you also need to, you opened the public hearing, but?
I did.
Yep.
I opened it, yes. Oh.
We would be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you. I think, I think what I was trying to say is the staff report was very clear, but there's questions. Supervisor Wilson?
Well, first of all, I do think that the, the item does have to be read into the record. So, I would appreciate that to happen before we entertain motions.
Actually, we did enter it in the record through the ordinance.
Okay. That's great. Then, the second part of this is, I just have a question. Are there any other entitlements that you see that would either expand or contract associated with this, with this item?
Through the chair, not to my knowledge, it's zoned AE. It remain, it will remain AE-zoned. I don't think the parcel size has any bearing on development potential.
Okay. I appreciate that. And with that, I'll second the motion.
Okay. It was a delayed second, but we've got a second. Supervisor Madron, do you have any questions on this? All righty. So, we will go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who would just comment on this item? And if you're listening on the phone, press star nine.
I want to thank Supervisor Bone for shortcutting the presentation, so therefore, I will shortcut my endorsement of this.
Well, thank you very much. So, I don't see anyone else coming forward. So, we have a motion, second, and we have the little vote box up.
I just want to, I legislate has failed to launch on my, that's what it says, failed to launch.
We'll look at the next part and song with that.
So, Supervisor Wilson, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
All right. I did want to ask, we can't read the closed session. I closed this here public hearing if I hadn't already. Closed it twice even. So, I'd like to ask our CEO what, what your thoughts are, since we really can't announce this item until 2:00.
And we don't have anything that I think we can plug into eight minutes, so we can take a brief recess until 2:00, at which point we'll read it in and then break for a closed session, which I think will take about 10 minutes.
Yeah. So, the closed session is expected to be short. That doesn't mean anything these days.
Yeah.[1155.41]
So, all right, we'll take it, we'll be out of this room shortly for, so, um, I'd like to ask our county council, interim county council, Miles, to read the two o'clock time set item into their, well, please let us know what it is.
Thank you Chair Bass. It is the intention of the Board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9 D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the case of Shawn Lee Perot versus Duane Christian, case number five colon two-two dash C V dash zero-one-three-one-one dash E J D.
All right, thank you. So we'll go to public comment.
First thing I'd like to thank Supervisor Bushnell for coming in and allowing the public and the two department guests that were sitting here at 12:30.
Oh, you know, I'll let you, hold on, you get to start over. I had the mic off when we took our break, so, sorry about that.
You heard what I wanted to say, so anyway, that's fine. I did, this particular case is, and it sounded like an interesting one, it has no, at all, it has no Humboldt County mentioned in here, so all I guess the public can do is assume that one of these people is an employee. I'm sure you probably won't answer the question, but it, it looks like it was generated in the fifth month of '22 and it, it's an E J D and I don't have a, that means something of justice, I don't know. Anyway, I don't see where the county's standing is on this one unless it's an employee. So I guess I'll find out some more about it later, I'll have my people do a little bit of research, but it's not the normal venue and it's not the, a normal case where you are listed as a defendant or as a litigant. Thank you, my opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. I do not see any hands from the public? All right, so we expect this to be short, all right, we'll see what, we'll be back here quickly. To resume, I'd like to ask our county council, interim county, I'm gonna just keep calling you county council.
Thank you Chair Bass. There was no reportable action taken with regard to items K1, M1, and M2. With regard to item K2, the Board voted unanimously to authorize the risk manager to enter into an agreement with the Mitchell Law Firm for defense of the case of Shawn Lee Perot versus Duane Christian, case number five colon two-two dash C V dash zero-one-three-one-one dash E J D.
All right, thank you. So we're gonna move on to our second planning and bill, I mean, our second public hearing, it comes to us from planning and building. I'm going to open the public hearing, but because there has been a lot of, a lot of talk about this one, is there, I thought we should still ask if there's any ex parte communication where one of us has more information than the others? Any, no, okay, all right, I just wanted to supervise your bone.
Well, I spent a lot of time at the fairgrounds even though it's the Humboldt County Fair, but it is in my district and I noticed there was a letter sent from somebody, I'm not sure, I think maybe they were from Ferndale, about a rumor and I'm not gonna respond to rumors, I just, I need actualities. I mean, I have had discussions with them, I had discussions with them about their roof, had a discussion with them about their floor in Bloody Hall, and I discuss every year the Humboldt County Fair and the 4H and FFA auction, so how it's gonna go, so I, there's a lot of conversation goes on out at the fairgrounds, that is, 68 acres that the county owns, so we have a pretty good vested interest in its success.
All right, thank you. And I think before I ask Director Ford to brief us on this, the way I see this going is we take a staff report, and we do have two appeals, which is an interesting, one that sounds like it could potentially kind of agreed upon and another that doesn't. So I was going to give each appellant the opportunity for 10 minutes if they wanted it, does that sound like it would work for you?
Certainly works for staff, I think that there's probably 10 minutes since you've got two appellants and the applicant, that you give them each an opportunity to present.
Now that sounds, I just wanted to get a timeframe down and Supervisor Bone has a question.
Director Ford, maybe you could clarify, because I couldn't get a direct answer. One is from citizens of Ferndale and sustainable humanity, or something.
Friends of Ferndale.
And then, and I, somebody sent me that that was incorporated in March of this year by the same person that's filing the other appeal. So is that, does that mean that the same person gets too bite of the apple, or how does that work, or are you aware?
I'm, I'm not aware, I don't, it's not understanding that the appeals are filed by the same entities.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we'll go for a staff report.
Thank you Chair Bass, good afternoon, Chair Bass, members of the Board, John Ford and Steve Lozare with the Planning and Building Department to present the separate appeals of the Friends of Ferndale and of Arnn Peterson of the Planning Commission approval of the Humboldt County Fair Association's request to modify a mitigation measure relative to noise associated with motorcycle races. Mr. Lozare will present the facts of the appeal, but I just wanted to give an overview of what staff is presenting today. We are not recommending upholding the Planning Commission, we're not recommending overturning the Planning Commission. What's actually happened is that the applicant and one of the appellants, or the Friends of Ferndale, have actually come to an agreement of how to move forward. And so that agreement would allow a one-time event to be monitored for noise, and there are provisions for that within the conditions of approval. And then after that event is held, there would be a community meeting to talk about the results of the monitoring, and then it would allow the Fair Association to determine whether or not they want to move forward and permit further racing, or whether or not that they want to stop pursuing this endeavor.
I think, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, Supervisor Bushnell, I'm sorry to break in, if you want to do it all without, I thought.
We, we love questions.
I'm just curious, so the applicant and the appellant, right, but what about the Fair Board, how, how, how do they feel about that?
The Fair Board is the applicant.
Oh, okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
One of those more interesting ones, yeah.
So, yeah, so the, the Fair Board is the applicant and one of the appellants, the Friends of Ferndale, have agreed upon this approach.
Okay, okay, okay.
The, the, the second appellant has not agreed.
Okay.
All right, yes Supervisor Bone?
So, is, as I read this, is, so then if they run the test run and it all comes out at, if we go to 99, it goes at 97, or whatever the case may be, then they have to go through the permit process all over again, or else could we just approve the Planning Commission with two events and four concerts now, that's, because that's on the table, and bypass the test run and everything else, just because we, there's enough information out there?
So the concerts are unaffected by this action?
I just, it's in there, so I just.
Yeah, so basically what this does is that it gives us, and the Fair Board, it gives the Fair Board, the community, it gives the county empirical information of what the real noise impacts are. And, and based upon that, we can do further environmental analysis as, as necessary, I don't want to prejudice that, it, it could be something that is really loud, and I think that's the fear, it could be something that basically meets the, the information that's been presented so far. But this is a workable solution compromise that two sides have come to, and so that's what is actually being presented today.
Thank you, yes Supervisor Bushnell?
I'm sorry, can, can you elaborate whether they would have to go through all the permitting process again, or would it?
They would have to reopen the permit and they, they would have to revisit the SEQA discussion, yes.
All right, did you want to provide more staff report, since we're already getting questions, or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Nikki should have that.
Okay, so Steve Lozare, I'm the sign planner for this project, on this title slide you can see kind of the breakout of what we were just discussing, we have two appellants, the applicant is the Humboldt County Fair Association, and this is an appeal of a Planning Commission approval of a modification to their existing approved use permit. Okay, so the, the modification is, was being sought to, the modification, the permit allows for concerts and motorsports events as it is currently approved, and the, the, the project is somewhat unique in that it is located within the city limits of Ferndale, the slide shows in yellow the, the city limits, and the fairgrounds by and large all occupy land within that. And in situations such as this, we, jurisdictional immunity applies, in other words, cities and counties are not required to get permits on land that they own within their, each other's respective jurisdictions, but in the case of this project, here you can see the zoning map for the city of Ferndale, its own public facility, the, because it is a project for purposes of SEQA, that is, the execution of the lease agreement between the Fair Association and the County of Humboldt, we wanted to have a mechanism by which we could hold a public hearing on the SEQA review, which is applicable to even something like a lease agreement. So the use permit was the kind of vehicle by which we did that, it was approved, it went to appeal by the Board, and I'll show you a timeline in a moment. The location is the fairgrounds, I'm sure you're all aware of where those are located, but the, the, the racetrack and the grandstands is kind of the heart of where the activities would occur under the permit. So this is a timeline showing kind of what's happened to date, the use permit application was initially submitted in April of 2019, it went to the Planning Commission in September of 2020, it was unanimously approved, then appealed by the Friends of Ferndale, one of the appellants today. The Board denied the appeal, approved the project on, once again, and added some additional allowances Supervisor Wilson brought in for electrical, electric motorcycles. Then it was revealed that there were some issues with one of the conditions of approval that had been applied specifically, which restricted the tailpipe noise levels, and there was a need to go back to modify the permit to deal with that. And that modification was submitted in late last year and went to the Planning Commission in May, of which an appeal was filed of the Planning Commission's decision to approve that modification, and we'll detail that in a minute. These are conditions of the permit that are currently in place and apply to the activities associated with motorcycle racing. It limits the number of races to two per year plus two additional races that are electric, electric motorcycles, it limits the noise from, from the tailpipe 20 inches away to 20, to 90 decibels, and it has a, what's called a community noise equivalent level restriction of 63 decibels, and I'll explain what that CNEL is, but that's a way of measuring noise over a 24-hour period and establishing a, a ceiling of sorts. And then also we have some mitigation measures for fugitive dust in the event there's windy conditions. The modification once again is to raise the 90-decibel limit to 99 decibels, it was revealed after the permit had been approved by the Board and the Planning Commission that the 90 was too low to allow for the actual people that would hold events to be able to do so, because it was below levels that were common for sanctioned events, and it was an error by staff in how it was applied, and we'll explain that in a moment. So really, just wanted to introduce that this, the fairgrounds, if you're not already aware, have been around for quite some time and have been holding events of many different types. Originally, the Humboldt County Fair moved around between Hydesville and other locations, but eventually settled in Ferndale and has been operating exclusively there since 1922. There's a variety of other events that occur at the fairgrounds as you might expect, and to that end, we believe that this is consistent with the range of uses that might occur at a fairgrounds, and that's part of the logic that we are using in our review and analysis of the project. These are just examples that motorsports events are not without precedent at the actual fairgrounds, but they, it's been quite some time, so from a SEQA perspective, they're not part of the baseline, but they are part of the actual historical context into which the venue is, been operated. This is a, you know, photograph from 1972 showing the fairgrounds, and you can see that in this case Arlington Avenue is not as built out as it is today, there's, there's less homes along it, but what I, what I really want to introduce here is that what's happened in recent years is there were some monster truck events, a Humboldt half-mile event, which was a motorcycle race, that was the sort of impetus for this getting on the radar of the county, and at that point, there was this decision made that before the lease agreement could be modified to allow for these types of activities, that there would be a, an actual environmental analysis conducted, and at that point, we, the Fair Association began working on that, which led to the application. We've used, in our analysis, the noise element of the general plan, and the noise element of the general plan includes the fairgrounds as one of the stationary noise sources. The two noise sources that occur in the, in the, under the permit is concerts and motorcycle racing events, as mentioned earlier, concerts are not part of the modification request that we're considering, they're, they're already allowed and not seeking to be changed. So in terms of motorcycle racing, the SEQA analysis that we perform really turns on this section of the checklist, in particular, it references noise standards in excess of a local general plan, and in our case, we have rules for noise in our general plan, and they break out in different ways, like this table is showing noise levels that are more routine noise sources that would occur every day, and we have thresholds for when it becomes too much, and, and they're commonly used throughout the state, they're not, they're not unique to us. This is another table that talks about short-term noise performance standards, and, and this is where we're more located with respect to the noise analysis, that it's temporary in nature, it's infrequent, and, and therefore, our, our general plan kind of doesn't get to an explicit threshold of significance, it, it mentions that temporary events could be allowed even if they exceed these standards, but it, it needs to be evaluated under the use permit and associated environmental review. So I was speaking about community noise equivalent level, it's, it's, it's a 24-hour measurement, there's weighting given to the time of, of day when the actual noise occurs, and essentially if you broke the day up into 24 chunks and average noise during each hourly increment, you can see the weighting factors for seven to 10 is a weight of 4.7, and a 10, a 10-weight is applied after 10:00 PM and before 7:00 AM. And this is just an example of what that might look like, when you have your average noises during the 24-hour period, you get a calculation using that weighting of what your CNEL is. And so when we set that li, limit under the permit of 63 decibels for motorcycle racing, it was based on analysis done by Witcher Engineering, a local consulting firm who did a noise study to establish what the actual noise levels would be, be during a theoretical motorcycle racing event. And they did that through monitoring, doing a noise study where they had people race around the track, to the, they had three people race, and they took measurements at two different locations, so one was along Arlington Avenue and, and another one was in the, the administrative parking lot for Ferndale High. And so they collected these data points for both ambient noise testing and for what they call exceedance testing, and so there's the three motorcycles racing around the track, there's the locations where they measured, and then you can see here that they had maximum decibel levels at those two noise monitoring locations of 85 at the Arlington site, 85 at the, at the admin lot site, and then what they did from there is because they didn't have a full heat of motorcycles, they used mathematics to try to extrapolate what might be the noise level if you were to amplify it to a heat of 18 riders instead of three. So these were all mathematical-based projections of noise, not actual real data from monitoring noise at, at the fairgrounds. And so as a consequence, you know, they averaged these things out, and they came to some conclusions about what the, what the noise might be for racing, and they made some assumptions about the, the racing window would be from two to 10, they assumed continuous racing conditions, and they included some treatments for exhaust system modifications that would lower the noise of each bike so that it would lower the overall noise of the event. And so you can see here, the, the full system exhaust treatment results in a CNEL calculation, that 24-hour calculation of 62.4. So we used a 63-decibel CNEL in our permit condition, and that's how we restricted noise under the terms of the use permit. Well, the other limit I was mentioning earlier was the 90-decibel tailpipe limit, we made an incorrect assumption, we thought that noise from the individual motorcycles at the tailpipe wouldn't be more than 105 decibels, because that was the limit under the flat-track racing rules and the testing procedures that are allowed there, but as I was mentioning earlier, the Witcher's noise, they didn't do noise testing at the tailpipe, they, they measured at locations where there were sensitive receptors, and so we didn't have actual data to correlate that. So when you look at what our assumption was of 105 decibels with the 15 decibels of a noise attenuation that was expected from the exhaust system treatment, we thought 90 was reasonable, it turns out it's not. And so we had to come back to disclose this to the public, to modify the permit, and in the course of doing so, we attracted more criticism on, on the actual permit, and that's led to an appeal today. So in addition, in the time between the initial approval and today, the Fair Association agreed to some additional mitigation measures, and those, so once again, here's those limits on, on the CNEL, the 63 that applies to motorcycle racing and a 73 that applies to concerts. So here's the additional measures, they agreed to install sound barriers at acceleration zones, this would be to help cut down noise where people are throttling through and coming out of a turn, and also learn that there was a way that you could treat the grandstands, Redwood Acres had done this with a special type of acoustical material that reduces noise reflection, which can often really dramatically affect the noise that's experienced. And so this is just a visualization of what those two additional mitigation measures that have been offered by the Fair Association look like, you know, there, there would be those two locations with the, either tractor trailers or straw bales that would help with the noise, and then also the treatment of the grandstands. So to get to the appeals, we have these two appeals, two different parties, as we were mentioning at the beginning, Friends of Ferndale for a Livable Community met with staff and were supportive of a revised approach to the permitting. The issues that they raised in their appeal largely stem from a, a challenge that our SEQA analysis was not, not adequate, and, and was not supported by substantial evidence. The representative, the meeting with the representatives occurred on July 5th, so we've been scrambling since then to modify the terms of the permit and, to reflect the, the agreements reached. So the Fair Association, here's the, the essential details of the compromise, as Director Ford mentioned earlier, instead of keeping what's allowed currently under the permit of two events per year plus two electric motorcycle racing events, the permit would be reduced to only allow a one-time pilot trial event, no additional events without modifying the permit, there would be a, an agreement to raise the noise level for the tailpipe noise from 90 to 99 decibels for the trial, do the noise monitoring by an independent acoustical engineer during the actual event, and share the results at a community meeting, and, and come back to the Planning Commission if they desire to add additional allowances for more events in the future. And then we've changed the permit conditions in association with that, they're reflected in the staff report you received for today's meeting, and then these are the issues that we received on the second appeal, and they, I'm gonna go through them just very briefly. And I'm going to go through them just very briefly. They're in detail responded to in the resolution itself and the findings that we've provided you. But one was that the modification should be denied and the permit revoked. Appellant number one, Mr. Peterson, believes that the fair mistakenly offering to, accepting a condition of 90 decibels, that they in some ways violated the original permit. That really isn't a violation of the permit. It was an error by staff, as I mentioned. And really, a violation of the permit would be to hold an event that exceeds those levels, and no events have occurred to date. So we don't believe that that's an issue that should be acknowledged. Also, the noise exceeding local standards, as I mentioned earlier, the standards with respect to temporary events are not explicit thresholds that have been exceeded. And with the infrequency of the proposal at this point, with just a single pilot event, it really is a hard stretch to argue that that's going to be a nuisance. The use of the fairgrounds being subject to, the appellant consistently maintains that the fairgrounds are under the jurisdiction of the city of Ferndale. We disagree. Our county council disagrees. It's well-established, and the city of Ferndale has never indicated that they are asserting jurisdiction. So we don't believe there's any merit to that issue. With respect to the mitigation measures not being feasible, well, in this case, with the revisions to the project, we're not trying to argue that the mitigation is adequate. We're really saying the fair wants to do more analysis and wants to have an opportunity to really get some good data instead of mathematically deriving it. And then with respect to the noise violating civil rights, the planning commission made arguments during both times they heard it, that when you live in a community, accepting a certain amount of noise is customary, and that not everyone appreciates the kinds of things that happens. And that's the compromise that comes with that. And with, given the nature of the actual proposal at this point with just one pilot event, it would seem to be a modest request. And then lastly, adverse impacts under Sequa, the same argument applies. The adverse effects will be reviewed again when and if this moves forward with a change to the permit to allow more events beyond the pilot trial. We had prepared a mitigated negative declaration the first time the project was approved. We did a supplemental MND, and the planning commission adopted that. But with the appeal and the changes to the project that have happened, we're no longer asking you to consider the supplemental to the mitigated negative declaration. Instead, we believe that an exemption under the Class IV exemption for temporary uses is appropriate, and the resolution reflects that. To that end, we did have to make some minor edits to the resolution, which we provided to the clerk, and you should have received. I had a slide to share with you, but I guess it didn't quite make it in the thing. So if you have any questions about the changes, it essentially is a change to the language of the resolution with respect to the Sequa findings. Instead of referencing the supplemental mitigated negative declaration, it's referencing 15304. So here's our recommendation: deny the appeal by Mr. Peterson, uphold the appeal by the Friends of Ferndale, approve the modification as has been described, limiting the events to a single pilot trial, and find the project exempt pursuant to 15304 of the Sequa guidelines, and direct us to file a notice of exemption as part of that. And that is reflected in the revised resolution. Oh, there we go. It did load. So there's the revisions to the resolution. So with that, I'm going to, here's the alternatives. We've got to give you some alternatives. If you choose not to take staff's recommendation, you could approve the permit, approve the appeal and deny the permit, or deny the appeal and approve some additional modifications that you see fit, or continue the hearing to a different date to allow for more discussion between the applicant and appellants. With that, I will end it, and thanks for bearing with me.
All right. Any questions from staff? I mean, from the board? All right. Oh. Yes, Supervisor Bowen?
So the only probably thing, and maybe I could bring this up later, I'm going to have a real hard time with, we have a nonprofit with a nonprofit board with a fairground coming out of COVID and everything else, that we're going to make them run through the whole dog and pony show again that we've done because our, because staff made a minor error. So we have some culpability in here. Can I get some sort of, can we, or I'll ask my eye, and then I'm only 20%. Can we get some guarantee that we're going to work with them as much as possible to cover, for this one race, to cover the expenses, to see what we come out with? Because I can't see, they're getting ready to put on a fair. I mean, it's going to be, the Redwood Acres Fair was very successful, and I just think, I don't think they want to be taking money out on a pick and a poke when, you know, they don't know where they're going. They've put enough money into this. So I just, if we could have some sort of recourse on our, you know, or help with our position of our culpability on this. Just wondering for myself.
So one of the things that's not addressed in the staff report or in the recommendation would be to direct staff to do some things, whether it's not require any additional processing fees or something along those lines, to process the subsequent permit.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, through the chair. Along those lines, is it possible that we do this pilot, pilot one race with, and the condition, can we add the condition that if that goes well, then they can just go forward without doing another study?
Well, the race will be the study. And so one of the things that is probably the heart of the compromise here is to allow everybody to know what the results are before the fair board makes a decision to go forward. And really, so as to do something that requires full public disclosure and public participation, that's where the subsequent permit becomes part of it. And so if I understand where you're kind of going is that not making it overly burdensome on the fair board. And that's where perhaps the county could be more engaged, more involved in supporting the work that's done there in order to do that.
Would it be considered public process if it came back as a report to this board?
It could be. I think that this is, these are new lines of questions that have not been presented to either the fair board or the Friends of Ferndale. So I wouldn't ask, I wouldn't, I won't answer for them. I can't. I know that the request from Friends of Ferndale and the agreement from the fair board is the recognition that the testing will help everybody. And I think the firm belief of the Friends of Ferndale, particularly in light of the fact that they did submit their own expert testimony from Illingsworth and Rodkin, drawing a lot of questions about the validity of the existing noise analysis, that they believe that it's going to be much louder than what has been disclosed so far. And so I would not want to try to undermine the concern and importance of that.
I understand that. I'm saying that at the end of that race, if it proves to be not an issue, then that's what I was getting at. So I understand the rest of it.
So if the board wants to leave an out for the board to make that decision at a public hearing, that's probably something we could craft.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to go to one more. Supervisor Wilson had a question, but I want to get the appellants both an opportunity to speak and the applicant. And before I, yeah, we'll go with you, Supervisor Wilson, and then I'll call them up.
Well, I mean, before we hear testimony, I just want to appreciate the work that's been done by staff and by the applicants and by the appellants, both appellants actually, and to craft the place that we have come to today. And I just want to caution us not to take something that's already quite, actually kind of complicated and sort of threading the needle, both from a Sequa perspective and from a community perspective. I just want to just really thank you guys for working on this because it is, there's a lot of, I just, I read a lot of negotiations went into this, and I really appreciate that so far. But, you know, testimony can change things. Open mind.
All right. Thank you. And so each appellant will get 10 minutes to, or you don't have to take all the time if you don't want to, to state your beliefs, thoughts. The applicant will get the same. And then the appellants will have like another five-minute rebuttal. And then we're going to go to staff. Does that sound correct? Okay. And by that time, when it comes back to the board, the appellants and the applicant aren't part of the conversation anymore unless a board member requests to have them answer a question. So just wanted to straighten all that out. So appellant, how about, I mean, Stephen, you're up close in the thing. You want to, I mean, you're closer, or do you want to speak?
I want to first.
They want, okay, they want to go. I'm just trying to figure out who's what. All right. So it appears that Mr. Peterson gets the first opportunity to speak.
First thing that I'd like to clarify is, I'm a founding member of Friends of Ferndale.
Can you be closer to the microphone so we can make sure we have you on?
So I was a founding member of Friends of Ferndale, and I was also the very first vice president of the organization.
Oh, actually. Do you want to?
I quit the organization when all this compromise started. I don't believe it's active. And so I have no significant commitment.
Okay. I hate to say, Mr. Jacobson, I know you're, the microphone's not close, I mean, Peterson, sorry. Can you see, and I've got two supervisors. Yeah, it's just easier in the microphone, and it picks it up better.
So, yeah, I don't want to refer here to Friends of Ferndale. I realize why I filed a separate appeal, so I think it's a separate action. Can you load my presentation? Okay. And we can't.
Did you say you can't here?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay, just lift it up a little closer. We're good. It should be fine. I had to change, I changed off. I switched you from that mic to that one.
The first thing I want to say is I had no idea there'd be a 10-minute limit, and there's a lot of information I'd like to go through. So I'll start out with this quote. This comes from a conversation between my father and Rex Bowen in 2016 when they were discussing Sequa. He flat-out said there are ways around Sequa, and I strongly believe that the effort has been to circumvent Sequa.
Bo, I'm sorry.
The focus of my appeal is that the planning commission has abused their discretion. It's all based on a bogus noise study performed by non-experts, and their findings are entirely The first thing I want to complain about is, people keep saying there's a history of racing that goes back to the '40s. Sequa and the EPA weren't established until 1970. The Noise Control Act wasn't until 1972. The very reason for a conditional use permit is there is no relevant history. Sequa outside of three years, it's irrelevant. And I think this is entirely misleading, and I'm tired of hearing it. The Witcher study, now, the Witcher study consisted of three motorcycles going around in circles at racing speeds. There was really no monitoring in terms of the proximity of these motorcycles to each other. And of course, that's a big consideration in terms of a study. This is an actual picture from the Flat Track Racing Association. This is what a flat-track race looks like. It's very concentrated. When we're talking about 18 motorcycles in close proximity, there's what is called constructive and destructive interference, and that this is much louder than just a motorcycle can demonstrate. Okay, so as far as the study, these were receiver locations. And from an aerial view, they actually look pretty reasonable, you know, pointing to residential areas. But, if I go to the next slide, from an eye-level view, there's just way too much interference to gather anything from it. If you look, you can barely see the track through those buildings. This is the Arlington receiver location. I was there, so I know exactly where it was. Yeah, there's just way too much interference to get anything from that. You look in either direction, and you see nothing but barns. It's just that very narrow channel that the sound was directed through. One thing I want you to notice in this picture is that I took it a day later, and it was a foggy day. The ground's actually wet. It was overcast. That's a really important consideration that was never thought of. As I said, I was there. This is the picture I took of Ms. Ragley and the testing. I'd like you to notice over in the right, behind that fence, they did wet down the track, and during testing, there was about a 30-foot cloud of dust could be kicked up. That receiver location, you'll notice that there's exactly 300 feet of turf that does absorb sound. There's a gentle slope right before it that has an effect. And, well, we're quite a ways away from the track. This, from the same receiver location, if you look in the opposite direction when considering traffic, there's a narrow little driveway. There are, there's vegetation, there are buildings, and there's a hard reflective surface for the noise from traffic to go through. I mean, either of these locations, I really don't know what they demonstrate. Had they started at the track, had tested in multiple locations, then these would be relevant. But the data obtained, the data obtained from these two places is useless. Okay, the major problems with the Witcher study, there's a strong focus on the CNL, or CNL. And they actually state that the perception of a nuisance varies based upon sound level, frequency, and fluctuation. And that's the last time they talk about it, either of the last ones. As far as the total noise from an event, there were things done, there were things done like excluding the traffic noise. And under Sequa, that's, you can't do that. You can't just say it's the same as the fair, and therefore, it's not part of it. It's the total noise produced by the event. And there's also environmental factors that were never considered. Again, it's the cumulative impact and a number of things that need to be considered. Like I said, traffic is included in that. In the pits, they're very loud, if you've ever been to one of these events. There's generators, air compressors, bike tuning and repair, impact wrenches, power tools, and of course, cheering fans and announcers. That is the sum total of what the noise is actually supposed to be measured. There are factors influencing sound transmission. As I said, the turf, the terrain actually absorbs a great deal of sound. Humidity, like I had mentioned in the photos, it was a bright sunny day when they were doing the testing, and the next day it was foggy. And humidity has a huge effect. Wind direction, of course, temperature differences, and you really have to look for obstructions, which in the study, those specific positions were absolutely obstructed. As far as the noise limits, this is a really interesting case. But the general plan lists 60 decibels. This case was for a wedding venue in the essentially Santa Clara area by Steve Wozniak's family. It was to be for approximately 100 people. And they went through the exact same process. They held the event, the neighbors complained, they went and got a mitigated negative declaration and a conditional use permit. It made its way all the way up to the Sixtors Court of Appeals. And the court basically decided that, in terms of Sequa, the general plan noise limits are simply for reference, that they're simply for comparison. And outside of that, they really shouldn't be considered. One thing that did come out of this particular case was they held a mock event, and that was found to be, you know, you can't base the impact of the event based on a mock event. So, yeah, the, this is a really interesting case that parallels exactly. I'm particularly proud of this title. Throughout this whole process, there has been the discussion of these advanced mufflers. I never bought it, but when they calculated the CNL, they actually calculated 83 decibels. And they knocked off 20 decibels when they, because they were going to require these advanced mufflers. And so that's where the 63 decibels came up with. So they cited the NIET 2017. And, you know, it's just a quick citing within their study. And the NIET 2017 refers to the Noidia Institute of Engineering and Technology. What this institute actually is, is a trade program, and it's founded in India. Here's the actual study, and keep in mind, this is where they got a 20-decibel reduction. So this was a study done by students. In this study, they had one motorcycle. It was stationary, and they tested it without any exhaust. And just for motorcycle guys, this is a Royal Enfield Bullet. It was designed in 1932, and it's the, still manufactured today, and it's the oldest design still manufactured. So, yeah, they did a little test, and they never actually tested a production muffler. They made their own mufflers out of scrap. And so this 20 decibels from these modern advanced mufflers, there's your magic muffler, and it's made by some students. So advanced mufflers that'll reduce the noise to 20 decibels, they don't exist. So there was a 2017 event, and keep in mind, we protested relentlessly. We, you know, before this event even happened, we were blasting city council meetings with the noise of motorcycles. I mean, we put up a fight, but they got the green light for it, and, you know, they had a chance to, mufflers, hay bales, whatever they wanted to do, to really demonstrate exactly the impact they were going to have, and they did the complete opposite. They did not respect us as neighbors. They didn't even, there was tons of discussion online about no noise limits, and this is after the public outcry. Somebody had their against actually putting earplugs on one of our cars, and that was just kind of an in-your-face. So as far as this compromise, the.
Excuse me, I'm just gonna, how much longer do you think your presentation?
A few minutes.
A few?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll give you three more minutes. I just want to make sure we've got something, and I want to keep track. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And I'll do the same for the others.
A few things I want to mention. They had their trial event, and they failed. And as far as the tailpipe noise limit, we've already explained why that's unreasonable. As far as one additional race for motorcycles with electric engines, well, there's never actually been a study, and those vehicles actually make quite a bit of noise, not as much as a gas engine, but, you know, there's chain noise, there's tire noise, there's aerodynamics. It needs to be considered, but absolutely, electric motorcycles will, they'll be less noise than a gas motor, but based on the Witchurch Study, we really don't have any information on that. So another thing I'd like to mention is 24-hour noise monitoring, and, you know, to be performed by an independent acoustical engineer each day, and it'll be shared with the public. My interpretation of this compromise is neither side, either the Friends of Ferndale or the Humboldt County Fair Board believes the noise study is sufficient. Neither side believes Witchurch Engineering is our experts, as they want an independent acoustical engineer. And to back up, they want 24 hours of monitoring. The Witchurch Engineering Study was actually 15 minutes. This does meet the grounds for revocation. There's absolutely been some deception and fraud. It is a very clear nuisance. It hasn't been acted upon for one year, and they simply cannot meet the conditions of approval. Now, any one of those things should lead to revocation. So my conclusion, the findings by the planning commission are entirely unsupported. The simple fact is motorcycle racing in residential area will never pass a legitimate EIR, but of course, they're trying to bypass that with the MND, and there's absolutely grounds for revocation. And thank you.
All right, and I would suggest, thank you very much. If you want to sit closer to the front, there'll probably be questions for you after we do the presentations. And Friends of Ferndale, did you want to come up next? Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Avis, and I am the president of Friends of Ferndale. We have our attorney online who would like to briefly address you before I make my comments. Thank you.
All right, so.
Is that Mr. Amador?
No.
Okay.
No, he's a speaker. Hold on. Why don't you stop the speaker timer while we're trying to find. So do you know what their last four digits of their phone number are, if they're on the phone? Or they can raise, raise your hand.
It is raised.
There is a hand raised in here.
That's him. Thank you very much.
Well, we can just ask if, which one number?
9782, and I just asked him to unmute.
Okay, if 9782 is the attorney, actually, let us know who you are.
Hello.
Hi.
Good afternoon, board members. This is Nick Garelli. I represent, I'm with the law firm of Witchurch, Watson &amp; Gresham, and I represent Friends of Ferndale for a Livable Community in connection with this appeal. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, and you have like 12 minutes, just give you a heads up.
Okay, I won't take that much time. So thank you for the opportunity to address you today. It has been clear to me over the past two years that Stephen Avis and his colleagues with Friends of Ferndale have sought a cooperative solution to address noise and other community impacts brought on by motorsport racing and concerts at the county fairgrounds in Ferndale. The fairgrounds and its dirt track are adjacent to Ferndale High School and a residential neighborhood, so it's no wonder that Friends of Ferndale have taken an active interest in this matter. According to acoustical experts, a 9 dB increase in the instantaneous max noise limit for motorcycles at the fairgrounds would clearly increase noise emissions in the community and at a significant level. But we are pleased that the planning department understands the potential risk of noise pollution generated by the fairgrounds' proposed CUP modification. Friends of Ferndale has accepted the staff proposal before you to operate a single motorcycle race as a pilot test to test noise emissions and develop necessary mitigation to protect the community. Friends of Ferndale is willing to accept the modified CUP with the proposed conditions presented in the agenda packet. However, I wish to make two comments for the record. It does sound like the draft resolution has been revised to remove the adoption of the supplemental MND. That was one of our initial issues, but it sounds like the planning department has resolved that. To the extent that the issue has not been resolved, the supplemental MND should not be adopted because it includes the wrong project description. Finally, once the pilot race has been completed, the planning department, noise engineers, and all the stakeholders must interpret the data to determine whether any impact has occurred or will occur in the future. It will require further modification of the use permit and an update of the environmental documentation. If mitigation is necessary, that mitigation should be incorporated through a modification to the use permit. We do not believe that the general plan's exception for temporary noise events is an excuse for a full and sufficient evaluation of noise impacts under CEQA. Now, a letter explaining our legal position on this appeal is included in your agenda packet, but again, Friends of Ferndale is pleased with the staff recommendation at this time and looks forward to cooperating with the fair association, the county, and the board on a workable solution going forward. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. And Steve, did you have some to add to that?
If I might.
You might want to turn the.
My name again is Stephen Avis. I'm a resident of Ferndale. As you can tell, I have a little bit of speaking issue, so I will speak slowly, so you can understand me. Ferndale is a small community in Humboldt County. It is a city incorporated, and therefore, it has certain legal rights. We have a planning commission that makes land use decisions about our city. So it's a little bit strange for us to have an outside body making land use decisions that affect our community. The decision-makers who do not live in Ferndale are not part of that community. They may not understand the nuances of living in Ferndale and what goes on. Many of them have not even visited Ferndale or frequently come, except for Supervisor Bone, who is there regularly for events and shopping, which I appreciate very much. Pardon?
I'm there for work, too.
And work, too.
I'm sorry.
All right. The Friends of Ferndale Board met and realized that there are oftentimes legitimate competing needs in the community. In this particular case, the fair has a racetrack that is unusual, it's a dirt track half-mile long, which has obvious interest for people. We have a community of people who are concerned about noise. Ferndale used to be a noisier town when logging trucks were rolling down the hill with jack brakes. It's quiet now. It's a very quiet place. The fair makes some noise, but it's a routine part of the community. Adding motorcycle races will be a significant impact, whether it's one day, two days, five days, 10 days, it's an impact, and it needs to be regulated and studied. As pointed out earlier by Mr. Peterson, the Witchurch Studies, the previous studies done may be inadequate. We did provide you with a more recent study done by a very well-known firm who reviewed, peer-reviewed, the contract, and came up with new numbers, which I think are more accurate of what to expect. But we decided that in a small community, having grievances is not good. Small, yes, wins and losses can create long-term grievances that do not benefit the community. So we wanted to find an approach. How do we get what we need? The fair wants a race. We want data. We did not have data. So our suggestion is to have a one-time race that is monitored by sound engineers, collect the data, not mitigated, just unmitigated, just put it out there. 99 decibels, go with this monitor. What do we get? What is the sound level we get? And then from that, we can extrapolate what would be appropriate to bring it down to a level that would be comparable with the city or the county is looking for for their CNL. That seems to be a reasonable approach. The fair gets an opportunity to have a race to find it as financially feasible as it works. The sound engineers get a chance to have real-life data, not extrapolation based on a few motorcycles going around track and assumptions. And the community gets some assurance that if it's going to proceed, that we will be protected to, from a reasonable degree, from unnecessary noise. We're very proud of the work we've done. I'm very happy we've been working with the fair association manager and board members, and Jay Russ, who is the promoter of this idea. We've worked collectively well. I think we've come up with a good agreement that works for everybody, and I would urge you to support our appeal and find for the findings that are presented to you by staff. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Stephen. And now, is anyone from the fair association? Welcome, Johanna. Do you have flashbacks when you come in here?
Not really.
Not really? Okay.
So there's going to be several of us speak on behalf of the association.
And so it's the same timeframe of, okay, I think you got 13 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Humboldt County Fairgrounds is an important hub for our county. Besides the annual county fair, the fairgrounds own public facilities, and the general plan is home to numerous uses. Weddings, quinceaneros, rodeos, dog, poultry, goat, and horse shows, training facilities for law enforcement, camping, reunions, OES disaster center, memorial services, craft fairs, meeting facilities, graduations, horse boarding, concerts, school activities, RV and boat storage, et cetera. The cost to keep the fairgrounds open on a daily basis is approximately $55,000 per month. That's just to keep our doors open, staffed, and pay our bills. Thus, the need to conduct interim events to supplement the fair's income. Personally, I was really surprised the association was required to secure a conditional use permit for interim events. After all, it is a fairgrounds. But rules are rules, and in 2019, a permit was approved for motorcycle events and concerts. We received strong support from Humboldt County residents and surrounding community families, with the exception of a group of individuals, the Friends of Ferndale. The fairgrounds has a premier racetrack and grandstands, and there is very strong interest by reputable motorcycle event producers to use the fairgrounds for an annual syndicated sanctioned race event. This will be a family-friendly, fun event. I'm not talking about multiple racing events. The permit allows for two days per year of motorcycle racing. As you are aware from your staff report, the association's use permit has been through the wringer, ultimately requiring a modification of the original permit. Fast forward to today, now we are asking for a one-time trial motorcycle event to appease a group who opposed the event from the beginning. So what began as a way for the association to generate much-needed income to help maintain the future vitality of the fairgrounds has become a costly endeavor in staff time, fees, and attorney cost. I personally have spent scores of hours working on this project, as has other individuals on our fair board and community members. So when it's all said and done, if approved, the association will conduct a one-time event, which will still require costly mitigation measures, just to prove we can conduct the event in a responsible way, which I have no doubt that we can. To have additional motorcycle events, we will be required to start the modified CUP process all over again, including the associated fees, our staff time, the county's staff time, and board members' time. To end my comments, I want to thank your planning director and staff for their guidance through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. And whoever else is speaking on your behalf probably come up, so you don't lose any time. That's what happens when you sit way in the back. In fact, you may, if there may be questions, I might want to stay up closer, but welcome.
So good afternoon, supervisors. Jay Russ, Ferndale. As was said, I've been kind of the proponent of this project from the beginning. There's a large community of motorcycle, flat-track racers statewide, regionally, Washington, Oregon, Nevada. Those folks all came to this event in 2017. The reason we're sticking with this is because we see the huge potential for people to come to the area. It's not just our local guys. It's much larger than that, and really, what's at stake here is, or I guess I should explain really, the, you know, the sound is the issue, and there's a little bit of a misperception about the sound. I mean, obviously, there's people that are concerned about an increased noise on, you know, on a weekend in the summer, but the change from 90 to 99 creates somewhat of a false impression of what's happening here. As has been explained by staff, that, I mean, that was a calculation error, and really, what's being compared here is the sound of the event in 2017 to what's being proposed. And, you know, the Witchurch sound study used three bikes that were raced in the 2017 event. I was one of them, and we were using racing mufflers. So the reality is that there will be some sound generated by the event. It'll be comparable to the 2017 event. It most likely will be quieter because there are more constraints on this coming event. It's going to be understood that the motorcycles have to have, you know, you'll hear more about that from Don Amador, who's an AMA District 36 official. But ultimately, we're planning on building on the 2017 event, continuing to improve the event so it meets the standards of the community, and bring a lot of folks to Humboldt County during the summer. So just hope that you can support your staff's recommendations, and we're here for any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Good afternoon, Chair Bass, supervisors. Thank you for the chance to be, to speak on this issue. Jack Rice, one of the board members at the Humboldt County Fair Association. So I encourage the board to adopt the staff recommendation, the compromise that's been worked out. My only comment really is with a lot of these conflict issues, there's a little bit of misunderstanding, there's some uncertainty, and then there's substantive disagreement. We were able to, we reached out to the appellant. We were able to talk with the Friends of Ferndale and discuss, like, work through some of that. So we resolved some of our misunderstandings about each other. We figured out a way with the help of Mr. Ford and Mr. Lazar to deal with those uncertainties. That's our event. We're going to do our best job to put a good event on, do the, keep it as quiet as you can make a motorcycle race, and figure out how this can be done well for the community. And that, I think that was a very constructive process. We would have liked to avoid having to go through an appeal, but thank you very much to your staff who helped us find a way to get to a point where we can hopefully. We would have liked to avoid having to go through an appeal, but thank you very much for, to your staff who helped us find a way to get to a point where we can hopefully have a race. And while we do a good job, we're going to test it, see what it, how, sound, actually sounds like, follow up, and know, deal with the uncertainty about how loud this is actually going to be. We'll know, and we'll be able to move forward with that. So, thanks to all, thank, for helping us get here.
All right, thank you. All right, and that's, that's all you have speaking? Um, yes?
I think Mr. Titus with the fair board is on Zoom.
And Mr. Amador is, um, so, turn that off. Is Mr. Amador part of the presentation or just the public speaking? Okay, so Titus is on, okay. If you are, raise your hand, press star nine, is he?
Eight-eight-four-one.
Are you eight-eight-four-one? If you're eight-eight-four-one, press star six to unmute.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes. You have a...
All right, thank you, thank you, Supervisor Bass.
Okay, and you have six minutes left on your time. Go ahead, I just want to let you know you have six minutes left of the joint time. Since you're not here, I just wanted to let you know. Because you're part of the presentation.
Okay, thank you. I, I just want, I think that it's important that we point out that, you know, we keep saying Ferndale, 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 and I know I'm from Ferndale, but that really bothers me because this is the county fairground, and all five of you guys there represent different districts that make up the county.
Hold on, just, hold on a minute, whoa, 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 hold on a second. Is this Mr. Titus? Do we have the right person? Okay, good, I just, I wait.
It is, you...
I know, I just said Titus. I wanted to make sure we had the right person because there's a little confusion there if it's public comment or that. Thank you Supervisor Bone. Okay. You can please continue.
Okay. This is Andy Titus, talking to Virginia Bass right now.
Sorry.
Thank you. I just think that it's important that we, as a group here, realize that this is a community event, and that it is a community event that is going to be good for the whole county. You know, I mean, I'm, I'm huge on community. I've been on the fire department, I've sat on school boards and different things, and donated a lot of time to the community, and this is another one of those things. And, you know, Ferndale, yes, it houses the fairgrounds for the community, but when these events are held, I mean, I think it's been well documented that, that we bring in somewhere between seven and eight million dollars in a 10-day period or two-week period for the fair. Well, this is another one of those events that you're talking about bringing people in from out of the area that's going to generate revenue, and I think we'd be naive to say that the majority of it won't go to Ferndale because it will. But, there's going to be people sleeping in hotels in Fortuna, there's going to be people sleeping in hotels in Eureka, eating in restaurants all throughout the county, shopping in stores all throughout the county. And I think that, you know, we've got to take that into consideration when this, when we're, we're making this decision. You know, another thing is, in, in 19 and 20, we worked with the Friends of Ferndale, but back then, Mr. Peterson was part of the Friends of Ferndale, and he was so upset at the fact that the Friends of Ferndale were willing to work with us and try to do a collective agreement to make this happen, that he at that point left the Friends of Ferndale. Now, fast forward to where we are right now, you know, we're, we're trying to do this again, you know, Councilman Avis and the Friends of Ferndale have been willing to work with us and come up with a compromise that I think will work for everyone, and multiple people on different occasions, occasions have reached out to the other appellant and gotten nothing in return. You know, we're trying to communicate, we're trying to work on these things. I was not a board member in 17 when the original event went on. Staff has all turned over since 17 when the original event went on. We are turning things around, we are trying to be forthcoming, we're out there, we're trying to work with people. And, you know, we're, we keep hearing, and this is something that really bothers me. I've always heard, oh, the good old boys, the good old boys. Well, we're trying to change that, but guess what, people? Here, we're trying to bring something new that's different, to be diversified, and we keep getting hammered back. So it's like, you can't, on one hand, sit here and go, these guys are sticks in the mud, they're good old boys, they won't make any changes. We try to make changes, and then we're met with what we're dealing with right now. We want changes, we just don't want the changes that you guys make. So I'm going, you know, what is this? I mean, we do have a deal here with the county and the Friends of Ferndale, and as the president of the board of the Humboldt County Fair Association, I would like to give our approval for you guys to move forward with the one-time event. It's not ideal, but it's where we're at. So hopefully, we can have the one-time event, it will allow you guys to see what sort of revenue it generates for the county, it will, it'll allow the appellant to see what noise is generated, and it will also allow the association to see if it's financially viable to continue going forward. But I think that there's one other thing we've got to take into consideration here. The fairgrounds is run 365 days. It doesn't work anymore for those 10 days in August to cover the bills for the other 355 days. The state funding and all those other things that used to go on years ago don't happen. So we have to think outside the box and get creative and try to do these other things that will bring in other revenue, like Director Redoni said, it takes about $55,000 a month to cover the bills. Well, we have to do different things to make that happen. I appreciate the time, thank you, and again, on behalf of the association, we would like you to approve the staff's recommendation. Thanks for letting me speak.
All right, thank you. So that's the end of the team there, and the end of the time, so my... Actually, we're gonna, we're going to go to, actually, I think we're gonna just, we don't have to give response time to anyone. So, I just was clarifying that, because I, there was plenty that was here, but we can ask questions of any of the appellant and applicant, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, but I think there may be questions for you first. So we'll, we'll close the public comment portion of this public hearing, and then...
Well, I, I think you need to hear...
Oh, yeah. Days, I'm just ready, I'm already, my mind is tired. All right. I'm glad I have all you help me out, though, especially Rex telling me everybody's name. Thank you. So, we have one hand up that I see. Are there others? Nope. Okay, if you're nine-six-three-eight, you'll have three minutes to speak, just press star six to unmute. All right, are you there? No one's, no one's speaking. I know he's there.
There he is, he hasn't...
Okay.
This is Dawn, can you hear me?
Yeah, is this Mr. Amador? Well, anyway, you have three minutes to speak, whoever you are. Thank you.
Dear Chair Bass and Board Members, my name is Dawn Amador, a Eureka native, and owner of Quiet Warrior Racing Consulting, and also Director of Government Affairs for AMA District 36, which is a sanctioning body for the competition motorcycle event that we are discussing. As some of you know, I have over 20 years of experience before, performing the SAE J1287 20-inch sound test for, on over 5,000 off-road motorcycles at AMA sanctioned competition events held on state and federal public land venues in California. I was a member of the California State Park 2002 OHV sound stakeholder process that included representatives from numerous conservation groups, such as the Sierra Club and California Wilderness Coalition. Other stakeholders included OHV clubs, OHV industry, California State Parks, Forest Service, and Bureau of Land Management. That collaborative effort led to the governor signing legislation on what is known today as the California OHV 96-decibel sound law that became effective on January 1, 2003. Over the years, implementation and enforcement of that sound law has functionally eliminated noise-based legal complaints regarding excessively loud OHVs that are being used for casual trail recreation or competition events. As this process slash agreement moves forward, I encourage consideration of the following recommendations that will help ensure quality data is collected by actually testing motorcycle competition bikes on the track using SAE J1287, which is the accepted sound testing standard used at other off-road motorcycle competition events held on local, state, and federal lands. And here are those three recommendations. Number one, for this event, use SAE J1287 at 96 decibels as a sound limit for all motorcycles at the event, regardless of data manufacturer. Number two, on-track vehicle testing for the event using SAE J1287 should be performed by personnel that have been certified to perform the SAE J1287 20-inch sound test, and also have tested over 500 motorcycles at previous competition events. Number three, post-event sound data and subsequent mitigation proposals should be reviewed in a collaborative process that includes representatives from the fair board, Friends of Ferndale, county, and competition permit holder. Based on my experience, I believe the noise emitted for a short duration by the competition motorcycles, if they use the 96 dB8 and the SAE J1287, will be similar to a neighbor running his gas-powered lawnmower. It is my hope that the event stakeholders can find common ground so this event can occur and bring some much-needed cool...
Sorry, Mr. Amador, that's the end of the three minutes, sorry about that, the timer goes quick to be consistent, but we did get all the emails, I believe, that you sent as well. And is there anyone else from the phone? Nope, we'll go to those in public, we do have one person, welcome.
Well, first comment I want to make is, is to Arnie Peterson. I, I can, I can feel your pain, I made an appeal, spent about $7,000 on a cannabis permit, and it was over, overturned by the board. My appeal was not accepted. Fortunately, the market and mother nature took care of my appeal and my own, so I do understand what you've gone through. I do strongly support the splitting of the baby that's been done. Anytime you get a group together, they're willing to come to a decision, I would, wouldn't try to moderate it or anything. The understanding that Rex had with the county would minimize the process and the cost to the fair, I strongly appreciate that and would endorse that, and, and otherwise, I'll just go ahead and say, I would go ahead and take your staff recommendation without trying to do further kind of changes. You have the, the baby split, and it sounds like it's going to go forward. Hopefully, everybody will, it will be resolved, and everybody will be happy, and I hope that, that Arnie does find that, that the new study and everything will satisfy his concerns. Also, wanted to point out, you know, it's not uncommon, especially in an area like this, you do move close to a fairgrounds, you do have expectations as far as anybody, me selling property or buying property, that things can change there, and, and of course, you're going through a process that seems to minimize any negative effects. So thank you for what you're doing here on this project.
All right, thank you. And is there anyone in the audience that's here wish to comment under the public comment portion? Okay, apparently not, we'll go back to the board, we'll close the public portion, comment portion of this, for real this time. And, I don't know if we have questions for Director Ford, Supervisor Wilson?
I have a few questions for me. The first one was, is related to the supplemental MND, and there was a, there was a comment related to whether the description in the supplemental MND was current, and so I wanted to clarify that.
It isn't current because it, it was done two months ago before we had ever arrived at this pilot trial. So, as I mentioned in the presentation, we're recommending, don't take action on that because it's not reflective. So the exemption that we've recommended, it might be in the beginning of the board report, I think I saw some artifacts there, but, but, yeah, if you haven't already picked up on it, please don't adopt the supplemental MND tonight, or today.
Okay, so that'd be like number three on our recommended actions?
Right, at the beginning of the report.
Okay, I appreciate that, okay. So that, if there's a motion, we probably should strike number three, I appreciate, is that what you're asking us to do? I mean, I'm just looking at it here, it's just an appeal of the use of the permit supplemental to the previously mitigated negative deck or areas and substitute mitigation measures, that section there?
If I could, on the front page of the board report, under number five, adopting the resolution, it, it finds the project exempt from CEQA. Number three is just to deliberate on everything that's being presented.
Okay.
The actual action is in number five.
Number five, okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Number five, okay, thanks. And then, my second one, question has to do with the suggestions by Mr. Amador with relationship to, you know, testing of the, of the sound of the motorcycle of 96, or 96 dB8, and then also, you know, the three recommendations that he has, both in his correspondence and what his testimony today, is that something that we're considering folding into this, or what's your suggestion?
We've actually already put those changes in there.
Okay, I appreciate that. Then... I, I do want to say that I, where we, with the boat, with the two appellants, with the first appellant, I want to agree a bit with, with the first dependent with the relationship to, you know, sort of leaning on the race history part of this, I do think that this, we, you know, it doesn't, CEQA wouldn't necessarily necessitate that. Nonetheless, we're, we're looking at something new, and I think that what's been suggested here is very robust in terms of, you know, it's basically a pilot study is what's being, is what's being proposed here, and this is, this is a, a permit for a pilot study. So I, I, I'm supportive of what has come together here. I'm not so supportive of the, of the suggestion in this context of what Supervisor Bone has put forward with relationship to the, to the fees. I would say that if we want to be supportive financially of the, of the, of the fairgrounds, we should just put it as a budget line item at some point. I mean, I just think that if that's how we're going to do it, that's, that's where we should do it, otherwise, I, I just don't want us to go down that road necessarily in this context, and I don't really feel like it's on the agenda for discussion. So, with that, I'm willing to make a motion to move forward with, with staff recommendations on this, and there wasn't any other modification, was there, Director Ford, that you can think of?
No, basically, the change we're proposing is to change the resolution to reflect what's in item number five in the recommendation that I just pointed out.
Okay, I appreciate that. So with that, I'm willing to make the motion with, with that amendment to the staff recommendations.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Did you have a comment Supervisor, okay Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the chair, I'm wondering, Director Ford, do you guys know how long a race lasts, per se?
The actual race time around the half-mile track, I don't know how long that lasts. We expect that there would be heats throughout the day, trials in the morning, perhaps finals in the afternoon. There are no lights in the facility, so we don't anticipate it would go beyond dark. And there was some discussion about putting time limits on the end of the, the day racing, and I think that actually made it into the recommendation to end by 7:00 p.m. That is condition, modified condition number three.
Okay. Does, does someone from the fair board know? Do you know how long, yeah, could you come up, please?
Yes, this is time, if you have...
Yeah, yeah.
If a question comes from a supervisor, come on up, or stay up.
So, can you be any more specific about the question?
Sure, so, so the total day would be around 10 hours, right?
Typically, what, what, the way 2017 happened is you tech the bikes in, you arrive, I think the gates open maybe nine o'clock, you tech the bikes in, I think the first practice laps start at, say, 11 o'clock, then you can move into heats, and those are usually groups based on your motorcycle class and your skill level, group of riders, they're real quick heats, five laps, so it's a blast, then you get into your, your mains later in the afternoon, so those are, those are like 10 to 15 minutes sessions, and then your main event, and then you're done. So, start, start probably sound somewhere between 10 at the earliest to 11, and you'd be finished by 7:00.
Okay. And in between those, there's space where there's time?
Reorganization where everybody kind of, you have to clear the track, and then next riders have to come up and get staged and ready to start.
Kind of like horse racing, then?
Yeah.
So, do you know how much time in between is about? So do you know how much time in between is about half an hour, 20 minutes?
No, I mean, to keep the program moving, I mean, probably equal amount of time to the event, maybe 10 minutes between each, each heat or main event.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Supervisor Wilson?
Director Ford, I mean, currently, in the general plan that we approved, noise ordinance was on the list of things that we were going to get to one day. Would this have been addressed in that eventually, or is there an intention to have these types of events addressed in that?
Absolutely.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then I just wanted to address a comment with relationship to the electric motors part. I, I do appreciate the idea that we don't have, and that we could monitor an electric motor race should it happen. My expectation, though, is that it would not unlikely be lower in volume. I mean, I just tell you, as an electric car owner, like, the car itself has to make noise going below 25, it's like below 25 miles an hour because people can't hear it. So my expectation is, is that there would be at least less than what we're talking about here. So with that, I'm supportive of this, acknowledging, you know, motorcycle racing, not my thing necessarily, but nonetheless, we do have diverse interests in this county for entertainment and other events, and I'm supportive of the compromise that was made here today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And yes, Supervisor Bushnell?
So, Director Ford, I want to address again, so if with this pilot race, that the data comes back that it's sufficient to the decimal readings and so forth and so on, is there a way that we can accommodate that we don't have to do, have them do a new application for further races?
If it comes back, complete, I anticipate what you're asking is if the data comes back and is completely within the existing assumptions of the existing environmental document, do we have to do a new environmental document? And the technical answer is no. I mean, if the data shows that the study by Whitchurch was right and the assumptions that ended up in the environmental document are fine, then no, we don't have to do a new document.
And does that need to be board-directed, or are you going to come, is that going to be difficult for you if it's not board-directed?
No, we know what we need to do with that. And if the board wants it to come back to the board, you can direct that, the normal first venue would be the planning commission.
So it would, so if it, if the noise study, or the, the study from that one race is all within the document already, then it would still have to go back to planning commission?
Correct, because this is a modification to allow the pilot study. So in order to do any additional races, one of two things will need to happen. Number one, either the permit's modified again to allow existing races to get it back to where it was when it went to the planning commission, or a new application needs to be submitted. The reason that we let the option open of the modification is because that's less intensive in terms of having all kinds of additional review by other departments, other agencies. This is really almost a, a single-issue reopening, if you will. And, and so it allows us to meet with the community, meet with the fair board, have everybody understand what the results are. And then at that point, if it's, as you're asking, that, and as Mr. Amador mentioned, that it's nothing more than somebody mowing their lawn with a gas lawnmower, then it would seem reasonable just to modify the permit and, and approve it with whatever modifications come out of the recommendations by the consultant, the acoustical engineer who does, who did the study.
So if it goes to planning commission and is modified and is approved there, it can be appealed there again, right?
Sorry. Yes.
But if it comes here, then that's it?
Correct.
So we could request, if this board so chooses, to skip the planning commission process?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Supervisor Madron, did you want to add anything? Did you ask? Okay. Supervisor Bone?
Well, I served on 11 years as the Ninth District Ag and eight years as president, and we went over sound and studies, and the things they've done to deny their sound is amazing, because I can't hear it from my house, and I live fairly close to the fairgrounds. So they've done a little bit of the same thing that the fair is talking about. As we move forward with this, and they've had racing there forever, and then every, I mean, Shasta has a racetrack, Hayfork has a racetrack, Del Nord has races, Yokaya has races, so having a race at a fairground is, is not really news. I mean, and I don't think, I don't think they were trying to get around CEQA by saying in 1947 to 1954, we had races. I think they were just letting you know that this has happened before. Now, with that being said, I've talked to quite a few people, and I made a point to talk to quite a few people, and I really didn't get that much response. I got a, somebody said they were going to lose their property value on their house, and I kind of did the math, I don't know how close, I think it's 1/500, the 1% is how much time there will be racing. We're talking 10 hours out of, I mean, it's bizarre. I mean, it's, it's, it's so small. So, I mean, it's, I can understand, but I think the economic impacts that Andy Titus brought up, the Lions made over $14,000 selling hamburgers. Now, all that money goes back into the community. Talk about being, you know, friends of Ferndale, that's, that's pretty friendly. I talked to quite a few people from the Spirit of Ferndale, who's a group of a lot of local lifetime residents, some not so lifetime, fully understand the, I know Mr. Travis mentioned that we, you know, a lot of us don't understand the ambience of Ferndale. I have a pretty good understanding of it. So, and with that being said, I was surprised how many people in Arlington are in favor of this. Not everybody. I fully agree, not, not everybody. But I was amazed that the Spirit of Ferndale had come out officially in favor of it, and I think there are 120 people strong or something. The economic parts of this is the big thing, and, but the sound is a big thing. I can, I can remember if we'd go after 11, and then we came down to 10 at the fairgrounds, all, the rest home would call me. I mean, I got all the phone calls. I mean, they had to start stopping races. The monster trucks, bad idea. I was happy to be there the night of the monster trucks. I was over on Arlington at somebody's house. They were loud, didn't bother those people, but they were loud. They were kind of obnoxious, actually. But the night of this 2017 race, I went out on the racetrack on one of the heat races. I think there was nine motorcycles in it, and my decibel reading on my Apple phone, but everybody swears by them, but my decibel reading on the track, on the outside, in the acceleration lane, coming out of turn two was 93. And I was on the track, and I let it go all the way down. My highest was 93. So is there going to be noise? Yeah, but as Jay said, there's probably approximately four races an hour for, you know, if that. So, I mean, and I, I remember going by Redwood Suites that morning and seeing all those motorcycles in the parking lot. Every room was rented at Redwood Suites, as it was said earlier, and they were working on motorcycles in Fortuna. It was kind of nice seeing all those people in town, because the economic part of this, because I can tell you what, I go to Ferndale a lot, as it was mentioned, for, I like to shop there, you're right, I like to eat there, but I do also have to go there quite a bit for work going through to go to Matol and everything else. But with that being said, there's a lot of times where there's three cars parked on the street. So they really do have to make hay when the sun shines, and I think this is another way that the fair board has stepped out to give an opportunity to present economic impact. So I, I appreciate what you're doing. I, I will vote for this. I probably would have voted for just approving it, but I'll vote for the abridged version.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. I'd like to ask the motion maker that we, if you're minimal to it, to amend your motion to direct staff to come back to this board instead of planning commission if the findings are within the Whitchurch, what the document already says.
Versus the planning commission.
Versus the planning commission. In fair, in fairness of time, they've been going through this for a long time already, and to go to the planning commission, if it gets approved there, then it gets appealed again, and it would come back here again. And that would, that would be, Director Ford, if the findings are within the document, right? The environmental document?
Probably the simplest way to write a condition is that, to simply say that any modification to the permit shall come directly back to the Board of Supervisors.
I would like to make that amendment if the motion maker is okay with it.
John, I have to ask you this question in terms of process. Are we going to see this come to us more than once? I mean, just, not just this, but in terms of like requests, this, I was just going to tell you, I'm not that comfortable with it because we have an established process, and I feel like this is how we do it. But can you give me what you think about that?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. There are some factors that are involved here that are, are unique to this situation. Number one, this is a county facility. There is not technically a requirement for a conditional use permit, as Mr. Lazar mentioned. That was something that the board chose to do in doing the lease so that there would be a public process for the environmental document.
Okay. So what you're saying is that an abridged process wouldn't be too outside the normal? Okay. Then yes, I, I think if you can amend my motion to include that change, I'm happy to do that.
Agreed.
And the second was good. Thank you.
All right. So are there any other additional comments or thoughts, or are we ready to vote? Supervisor Madron?
Well, I, I just want to thank the fair board for their hard work for our community. It is a tremendous asset, and I thank you guys do a fantastic job of trying to put on really great events. I also appreciate the appellant's points of view, you know, and wanting to make sure that these things are honestly considered. And I think, you know, where the receptors are and how that's collected in terms of noise is an important thing. So I hope we can do that in a way that really satisfies everybody, you know, so that when things come back, we're not in this position. But mainly, I just want to thank the fair board for all their hard work for our community. Also, I want to commend staff on trying to work with everybody and find solutions to move things forward. Thank you.
And my I legislate is still unlaunched, so.
You guys just missed my voice, don't you? Okay, I will go ahead and start the roll call vote. Supervisor Bone?
I am for.
Supervisor Bushnell? Yes. Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Roger that.
Great. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody. And that public hearing is now closed. Then we'll go to the last item is coming from Supervisor Madron, so I'm going to just turn this over to you. Or you can wait till people leave if you want a couple minutes.
Yeah, we'll give it a minute here. Okay. Do you want to get started? You want to wait for him?
If I want to wait, he's going to run across the hall for the supervisor.
Let's take two minutes to stretch.
He's going to lead us through that.
Okay, five minutes, max.
Supervisor, Supervisor Madron? And the summary.
The final agenda item of the day. Well, I suspect that I'll give this introduction, and then I know Director Mattson has some input he wants to provide, and perhaps the CIO may also want to weigh in, along with the public and others that have comments, I'm sure, today. So let me just start out by saying, I doubt there's any disagreement that we all see the need for dedicated funding for roads. Our roads are just falling apart. And I think Tom has come up with an estimate where something like, what, 27 million? No, was that it? 225 million in arrears, so to speak, of 20 years of deferred maintenance at a $10 million a year kind of thing. And, and so I don't think there's any, any disagreement about that. The real issue is how do we raise funds to be able to take care of our roads? You know, I've been talking with a lot of people in my district and elsewhere, and I think we all also recognize that we're already paying. You know, when you think about taxes, I don't take taxes lightly, but in this case, I think we're all, are already paying a lot more through car repairs from broken shocks, worn-out tires, delays for emergency vehicles, the danger of dodging potholes on the roads. They're all just really in bad shape. And add to that, we're having a hard time getting all our brushing and mowing done, which adds to our fire danger, because a lot of fire starts happen from that roadside vegetation. So again, I'm not going to argue about all that, because it's pretty well documented that we are already paying out as individuals a tremendous amount of money, and if we took care of our roads properly, we would save a lot of that money. So let's move the money up front and be preventative in our approach. So also, the other thing is, right now, we're not eligible for a lot of funding from the state through SB 1. If we were considered a self-help county, we would also be able to leverage significant funds from the state. Self-help means that we provide a road tax at some level, some way. And so there's that opportunity that if we did have some form of a tax, we would also be able to leverage a whole lot more money through that self-help process. You might also notice that I put on this, yes?
I was going to say, did you want?
Clarification on the self-help. We, we have a road tax in Measure Z. It's not, it doesn't qualify us.
Okay. So we are going to do another tax that goes in, but if we do another tax that goes into the general fund, that qualifies us?
No. We can talk more about those details, Supervisor Bone, if you'll let me finish my presentation.
Yes, okay. Let's say, let's, let's take the questions after the presentation.
It's a good question. So, you know, you'll notice that on this, I also put roads, trails, and parks. You know, my thinking was maybe 90% of what we raise goes to roads, maybe 5% to trails, 5% to parks. They all have a great need. I know this because I work with the Parks Department a lot. What sort of a tax would it be? General tax or a special tax? Obviously, there's a difference in terms of what threshold you need to get over for a special tax, 66.7%. For a general tax would be 50% plus one. So it's an easier hurdle, which is how we did Measure Z and Measure O. But I believe in order for it to qualify as self-help, it has to be a special tax. And so that's part of why we're thinking about this. The issue of when do we bring this forward on the ballot, we had hoped that maybe we could do it for November, but that's just way too quick of a timeline. The CIO and staff have looked at that, and it would be almost an impossible Herculean task to get it onto the November ballot. It's just not enough time. And it would require all kinds of things to happen that I don't think we're ready to do. And we wouldn't be as well-prepared in terms of educating the public and building community support for the measure like we did with Measure Z and Measure O. We took some time to get it right. So then there's March next year, there's November next year, but anything we do before November of 2024 would be a special election, and it would cost us $300,000 to put it on the ballot, because we as a county don't have anything else on the March or next November's ballot, right? So it'd be a special election, $300,000. So given that, it seems logical that we're probably looking at November 2024, which gives us substantial time to really build the educational component and get the community on board in supporting this. In the meantime, you'll note in this agenda item, I've also recommended in talking with Director Mattson that we add another position, because there is a lot of road money out there that we're not accessing, because we don't have the staff to write those grants and bring those monies in. One example is funding for fuel reduction. There's There's, you know, a lot of innovative ways to get money for roads these days. Vegetation management's one of those, and the state is bringing down billions of dollars for vegetation maintenance. So we could, if we had the staffing, be going after some of those funds to help us with our roadside vegetation maintenance or mowing and other fuel reduction tasks there. So that could be a great benefit. So the need is so great, I feel very uncomfortable waiting two and a half years to get substantial funding into the Road Department. And so I would recommend that we, as a board, consider, one, placing a measure on the November 2024 ballot and working up all those details with the CIO's office and Director Mattson and his department. Two, that we allocate another staff member to the department, a grant writer, to start going after some of these funds now. And number three, that we perhaps provide some direction to the Measure Z committee to be able to provide better funding to roads. What does that look like? That's for discussion. Right now, it's about a 70/30 split. About 70% has been going to fixed amounts in four departments: the sheriff, the DA, DHHS, and probation. The other 30% has been discretionary, and about half of that or so has often been going to the fire services, the Chiefs Association, and others. And they all have a desperate need as well, all those fire departments. And then the last 15% or so has been going to various pieces that are all important, but, you know, there hasn't been a lot of funding for roads. Yes, recently with the surplus money from stimulus and other things, increased sales tax, we were able to provide roads with a chunk of $3 million, but it's a drop in the bucket for the need, but very thankful for that. So those are the three basic things that I'm thinking about that we could do to try and help our roads out. But I think it'd be really good to, at this point, to hear from Director Mattson and then a follow-up from CIO Hayes on anything we might have left out. Does that sound good?
Sure. Do you want us to wait till all those and then ask questions then?
Whatever is your preference. It's kind of nice to get it all out there because often that answers questions.
Okay. I mean, I'm fine with that, but we'll see how it goes. Director Mattson?
Good afternoon, Chair Bass, members of the board. I'm going to try to stick to just what the facts are, what the needs of the Road Division are. You've all seen my presentations before on the annual Streets and Revs Report. That shows that cities and counties are, well, going into SB one, we showed that we needed an extra $15 billion a year, so SB one got us $5 billion, which is about one-third. And it actually is about one-third of what Albott County really needed for its road system. We really needed about another $10 million a year on top of our existing budget, not only to keep the system from getting worse, but to start to improvement. Our pavement management analysis from 2017 showed that, you know, projected that by 2026, we would have $326 million in deferred maintenance, I believe. We are currently in the update, our annual, our five-year update of our pavement management system. The overall system index at that time in 2016 was, or 2017, was 55. That's not very good. 70 is good. Anything above 70 is the most cost-effective to maintain and keep in good condition. So we're at the point where we have a huge number of roads that require total reconstruction, which is the most expensive way to try to maintain your road system, unfortunately. I'm, you know, highly doubtful our updated pavement management system will show an increase, probably a decrease. We are over the cliff's edge, basically, on the cost to repair our roads because they've deteriorated so far. You know, SB one has been a good boost. We had Proposition 1B years ago under Governor Schwarzenegger, which was a one-time boost. We get Measure Z. You know, we have to apply for that every year, and it's really beneficial. But unfortunately, it doesn't allow us any long-term planning. When we're looking at a road system, you know, six months to plan what you're going to do really limits what you can do over the few years because most of our projects are multi-year. And so, you know, realistically, if the county wants to see real improvements in its road system, we need about another $10 million a year, and that money needs to be as flexible as possible. There is a lot of money coming down from the federal government for projects, but those projects are really targeted to population centers. So we, you know, we have the Safe Roads for All program, which is a really good program. It's, you know, a perfect program for our downtown main streets, does not do much for Alderpoint, Matole, Bald Hills, roads out in the rural country, where the money's targeted really for all modes of travel, and we really don't have that need or, well, they have the need, but not nearly as in demand as in the urban centers. We have the community, the divided community money that's coming down, which, you know, we could look at for a lot of different things. A lot of it where the, you know, it won't affect the county, but where the state highway cuts through communities, you know, we could help communities get money for improving their connectivity based on that division of their community. There's a lot of money coming down for bridges. The bridge program, you know, has always been a very strong program in California. That's not one I'm really much concerned about. We have a number of projects in the wings, and we're, you know, hoping the new money, we can deliver those faster rather than later. All of our bridges in the state, except for Los Angeles counties, are rated by Caltrans, so we're all consistently rated. And, you know, we go to a bridge committee, and they look through and decide who to fund, and the increased funding will definitely allow more bridges to be repaired. And so really, it gets down to what kind of money do we want to invest in maintaining and improving our system and rebuilding, you know, what we have? I'm not talking about major improvements for, you know, that's what I would be looking to the federal programs, the state programs, you know, ribbon-cutting money for. The money we need is for the day-to-day maintenance. A lot, yeah, some of it initially will need to go to reconstruction, but that's reconstruction of our existing right-of-way. That's not expansions, that's not widening. It, you know, it's the repair of our damaged roads. So that's what I can add to this discussion. Anything that we can bring that is consistent and long-term will definitely benefit your road system. But our need is still very, very great despite everything that's come down to us. The system collapsed many, many years ago, and it's been slow and long trying to get back. Like I said, SB one was a huge step, but it was one-third of the way to where we needed to be. So I will defer to CIO Hayes and the board on what you want to do with how to fund it. But I can tell you, we need funding, we need long-term funding.
Quick follow-up question, if I may, through the chair.
Sure. That's fine.
Thank you. What's a percentage basis, or what's the amount of money we might be able to secure through if we have self-help funding locally?
Well, I haven't explored fully that because I know there's, the pot of money under SB one for self-help communities is $1 billion, and it's shared between all of those communities. But, you know, as a reference, for the $5 billion total for local entities under SB one, just for everybody, we got about $5 million of that. So it's another million, probably another million a year. That would be my rough guess.
All pieces to a puzzle. Thank you.
Maybe a little bit more because there's much less entities competing for that money than there is for the overall SB one money.
And would you agree that there are other funding sources out there that if we had an extra grant writer, we could be going after?
Well, we need to talk a little bit about that because I really don't have a specific grant writer position. We have grant managers that are different positions, so they write the grants and then they manage them. And so that would be a discussion I would like to have with the CIO and my staff to determine what our biggest needs are. Right now, my biggest need is the roads. I don't have anybody to write my road grants right now because we're so busy with storm damage. I've been the grant writer for roads for the last two years, and we have some big grants coming up that we could qualify for, assuming our audit is signed off and completed. You know, we can compete for the money, but we can't receive the money until that audit is approved by the state of California. But I'm hoping most of the grants that are due in September won't be reviewed and awarded until January, and I'm confident that we will be in position to receive the money by then. But again, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on with climate change that are affecting both public works and planning, that there's going to be money out there for, that we need to combine resources to look at. And again, our natural resource division, that's on top of the fire funding, is also a need. So I need to come back and meet with CIO and my staff to discuss what the biggest bang for the buck we would get and what position that would be and what they would be focused on.
And one last thing would be really horrible roads full of potholes and failing road edges and everything else aren't real good for tourism either. I suspect that there are many visitors who come and go into the hinterlands and go, wow, it'll be a while before I go back there, given the condition of the roads. So there's a lot of negative effects to not maintaining it, and that's just one more. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Director Mattson or Supervisor Michelle? I mean, Bushnell? I don't know if she did. I'm sorry. I was going to say if we had questions for Mattson, but we can go to the CIO first.
I think Supervisor Madron and Director Mattson did a pretty good job of describing the circumstances. What my office is really looking for is direction, and then we'll return to really formalize what this looks like going forward. Definitely supportive of doing this in 2024. I think that's our best opportunity at success, and I agree that there is an urgent need for these funds. I am also very supportive of it being a two-thirds tax for, to gain a supermajority of the votes. And I think if we have that time and we work collaboratively with Public Works on a very robust educational campaign, that we are likely to have success in that. We'll also certainly need to do some polling. We've worked on all of the last five tax measures to come out of the CIO's office, which were all successful. We worked with Lou Edwards on that, and they really do an excellent job at helping us develop ballot measures that are meaningful and successful.
All right. Let's go back to Supervisor Bushnell.
So I'm wondering about, to become a self-help county, would the initiative have to be 100% of that tax goes to roads, or would we be able to keep the parks and trails on that ballot measure?
We will have to do some research on that, but I'm pretty sure that if you have anything that is specific two-thirds dedicated to the roads, that would qualify.
So then my next question would be for Alicia. For a supermajority, we could say 90% to roads and 5 in 5 to parks and trails, or we could say 100% to roads if we chose, right?
I think roads, parks, and trails would, you know, qualify under the special tax. Again, as Director Mattson said, we would want to flush that out with the experts and with legal counsel, just to make sure we are meeting exactly the measure of the law. But if the opportunity is available to add in, that flexibility would be something that we would certainly explore.
Okay. And then my next question is around the Measure Z. So with November being a year and a half off and the need for roads is every single day, I want to ask a question around, so currently, the sheriff and who else gets a percentage, a set percentage?
The sheriff, DA, public defender, probation.
And what is that percentage?
It's based off of their staffing. It's not, I, overall, I think there are approximately 70% of the overall bucket of Measure Z money goes to those county departments as ongoing expenses. So that gets carved out right off the top.
So going, talking with what, or going with what Director Mattson just said, and not having long-term planning because he never knows what he has, is there a way for us to say a percentage also could go right to Public Works for road repairs so that he could do long-term planning?
We could certainly take that direction. Yeah, these are, Measure Z is discretionary dollars. They're, they are at the will of your board and can be allocated however you see fit. We have done a very good job over the years, I think, at falling in line very closely with what the Citizens Advisory Committee recommends. So, you know, there, I would want to do some outreach and some, you know, communication with them and just be sure that we can all be very cohesive in that. But I think that overall, that committee understands the needs for roads. It's been, it might not always fall as high as we have hoped, but it is something that is consistently mentioned in the public and with the committee as something that is a dire need.
Okay. So going along that thought process, Director Mattson, on an average of a year since we've had Measure Z, what do you averagely get from Measure Z?
I'm guessing it's about a million on average. Some years, much less. Last year, much more.
So if we, with that thought process in mind, knowing that the Advisory Committee already directs a million-plus dollars to them, but he has to apply for that, so he can't plan for that, is there a way for this board to perhaps say, right off the top, he gets a million and a half, and go forward so that he could do long-range planning? I know that's not a ton of money, Tom, but it's something that you can be, given that that Advisory Committee already directs money to them, can we, is there a way that today we could just say?
No, the agenda item is instructed today to allow for that very specific direction. Instead, we would be looking to come back with something to formalize all of what your board's will is, as discussed today. But yes, I think we can do that. Again, it's your discretionary dollars. However, you know, I take a lot of pride in the transparency of Measure Z, and so that's why I just want to ensure that there's a collaborative approach with the Citizens Advisory Committee and that we can bring back feedback from them, that if they think that's maybe too high, but yet again, it would still be at the will of your board.
Could you also get an average over, since Measure Z has started, an average of what Public Works gets? And when you talk with that committee, have that available to them so that they can realize that they already get, they already get money? And what Director Mattson is looking for is sustainability so he can long-term plan?
So. Absolutely. Also, you know, a suggestion to Director Mattson, you've always requested materials, and so it's the staffing that provides for that ongoing funding source through Measure Z. So we can work with Director Mattson on, you know, exploring future applications that might involve staffing, which then provides a steady revenue stream to him through that process and then frees up other revenue sources for materials potentially.
Thank you for that. However, we have all listened to the last year or two, two Measures Z, saying we don't want to fund positions any longer. So while you want to be transparent and you want to talk to them about that, I think we're going to get large pushback there. So just my thoughts for right now.
I see Director Mattson has his hand ready and poised.
I do want to clarify that last year, we did ask for three positions for the brush cutting because we came up with a proposal that we thought was very, very competitive but did require positions. So those are the only three positions that they have recommended funding at this point for Public Works.
Supervisor Wilson? Oh, sorry, CIO Hayes.
One last suggestion for Measure Z. We do always return to your board mid-year, and while the committee has developed a prioritization list for your board, you could also explore allocating whatever is remaining unspent at the mid-year to roads.
So, thank you. I'm looking for sustainability for long-term planning for him, as he stated. It's the uncertain money that he can't, he doesn't know if he has, that he can't predict six to eight months out for his long-term planning, which I think affects what kind of road maintenance we do have. And so while I, that's a great suggestion, and he'll take the money, I'm sure, I really would like to have a set amount that he can plan with. I mean, my thought process is.
Yes, I hear you on that, and I think that's where the road measure comes into play, right? That would be that long-term, sustainable funding source for him that is dedicated for a very specific purpose.
No guarantee of pass.
Correct. Yeah.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks. I have kind of a little bit of a list of considerations since we are talking about something that's out 24 to, or, you know, 2024. I wouldn't get hung up on percentages starting out the gate because any percent allocated specifically to roads would be basically, you know, towards self-help. And I don't, you know, it could be like 10% to roads and whatever else, as long as it's, as long as it meets a certain threshold, which you guys would be looking at, because I wouldn't. which you guys would be looking at, because I wouldn't, would want to know what that threshold was with relationship to that. Because, and the reason I bring this up is because we failed once already at this, and in whether or not it had to do with the dilution of the issue, or whether it was too specific, I don't really know. And we would have to do polling to really figure that out. And I think it'd be important to do, because roads by itself, we have to consider in terms of taxing, whether we're talking about sales tax, and if we're talking about sales tax, are we talking about all general sales tax, or is it a gas tax, or is it, are we talking parcel taxes? Because we have to ask ourselves who's benefiting and who's getting taxed. And that was one of the issues that we had to deal with with Measures Z, was making, was convincing those people who didn't live in or, you know, do most of their activities within the count, within the, within the, you know, with, outside the cities, we had to make a case that it was to their benefit to help subsidize these, these things outside the cities. And even then, we're still having to, you know, massage that every time we go through the Measures Z stuff. So I want to, you know, understand, or, you know, have us be cognizant of the fact that there are already folks that are living in incorporated areas, already paying additional taxes associated with dealing with the roads that are in front of their houses. And now we would, might be asking them to pay taxes to deal with roads outside their space, and in places where people are getting a lot more road to service them than other people. So there can be some inequities that we might want to consider that, and especially when we're talking about, you know, land ownership and those sorts of things. And I think that's important to just think about as we move forward. The other thing about this, too, is I want to point out that in, often, in road improvements, we have to be careful how we talk about that, because we have been learning more and more about how, when we feel like we're improving roads, people drive faster, and it doesn't necessarily actually make them safer. And accident rates don't actually go down necessarily. It depends on road design, and not necessarily just how smooth the road is that does that. And while someone feels safer in their vehicle, the safer a person feels in their vehicle, the less safe everyone outside the vehicle is. And that's, that's, there's a lot of studies about that, and there's a lot of data that shows that. And so we have to address that, and it's not just about filling potholes or smoothing out roads. There's more to it. I think as we also will be wanting to consider things like decommissioning roads, and doing a study with relationship to what roads and, and even widths of roads that we may want to talk about, you know, you know, lessening our asphalt burden that we have, and thinking about how we might do that. And there are roads, and I know we've talked about it in the past, but there are definitely spaces and roads that, you know, that we might want to ask ourselves, if there was no road there today, would we build a road? And if not, then maybe we should be thinking about the future with relationship to that. So road diets are another way to do that. I think it's important to think about transportation and land use and walkable communities, these strategies to lessen our burden on the roads with relationship to how much we drive, because the more that we put on those roads, the more maintenance they require. So the more, it's not just the road sitting there, but actually, what are the loads the road is taking? And we're going to have to talk about that, too. And I think it would be important that in any funding regime we talk about, we talk about ways to invest that to reduce our long-term liability of those infrastructures. And I know that can be controversial, but nonetheless, we, it's something that I think is important, and would be important from my perspective. And with relationship to how much that threshold is with relation to the self-help, it could be very small in terms of taxes. I, it seems like you could even go down to an eighth of a, you know, of a percent, and possibly get that to that threshold. So I'd want to make sure that we are looking at that. And my last question is for Director Mattson. And we, as a board, approved a position for a grant writer in, already for doing, you know, the natural resources under Hank. I was just wondering, how'd that go? Did it ever get filled? And what, you know, what did it produce? And I was just wondering, was that a, was that a positive experience?
It was very positive. Most of the work went to managing the Ill River Groundwater Sustainability Project grant. She was working on our Clean California grant, but left for a better job in Washington before that was completed. I don't know what other grants she was working on or applied at that time, but she was fundamental in making sure our groundwater grant was managed properly, and that whole program went through.
And then, so what was the value, in monetary value, do you think that?
Well, if I had a consultant to do that, it would be her salary times three.
Right. Well, and then also, how much did we derive in terms of funding into the, into the county associated with that?
I would, that grant itself was 1.9 million, but Hank Seaman wrote that grant. I would have to go back and look through the records to come up with what, if she did any future grants. But like I said, we don't just have a grant writer.
Right.
They're, they're project managers, they're environmental analysts, they're directors, deputies, engineers. And so we would need to focus on what the board really wants out of that position, and what we really need.
And so maybe we just need to figure out a title that we commonly use that's not so defined as a grant manager grant, I mean, whatever it would be. So those are my comments on this. I think that, yeah, that if we decide to, if there's direction from the board to move forward with exploring some kind of taxing or revenue generating policy to be devoted on by 2024, I'm, I would be supportive, but just with, you know, it's on the record what my concerns and things are. Thanks.
Supervisor Bone?
Mike, can you share some of that data that you have on good roads cause accidents? Because I can't find anything. I got 20, 30 articles that are, it's all bad roads. And I sorted it to do good roads cause accidents.
It's really about speed. It's about speed.
Fully understand, but I mean, I thought it would be in here, so.
I understand what you're trying to, you know, twist, what I'm trying to say.
No, I'm not trying to twist.
Yes, you are. Come on, man. Jesus.
Okay, come on. We can find, we can find, we can find articles on both, both sets of information, I'm sure. We'll be sure to get some for everybody.
Have we bothered at all, dealing with Humboldt State on grant writers and things like this? I mean, it's, it's, they have interns and stuff for, you know, they have people, they're engineering projects and things like that, and they're looking, they're begging to try to find places to intern. And I know they take time to manage also. But if it's simple grant writing and everything else, I'm just.
Well, I can tell you, you gave me a name that I need to follow up on, but I'm also on an oversight committee for the new engineering department. And we are looking at those intern positions, the co-op positions that can be developed, what we need, what Caltrans need, what the private sector needs, so that we develop a good program so that we can use those students. I will outreach to the person's name you gave me for existing resources, but right now, we are trying to do research on what the program should be, and their programs that they have right now aren't even connected. So I'm chasing threads, trying to figure out who to talk to to get everything connected. And we will continue to pursue that option. And we're actually, a whole bunch of us in the community, and out of the community, there are former graduates, are working with them to develop a very strong program that can help us in that capacity.
Thank you.
Supervisor Madron?
Well, let's go ahead and take public comment, and then I'll make a motion.
Sounds good. We'll go to those in the audience that are in person, and if you're on the phone, press star nine.
Kent Swawski, I'm here from the Humboldt County Tax Collectors, and I'm here to help. I'm Executive Director, this would have to go to our board, but this last election cycle, not this current one, but the Trinidad and Fortuna we worked out deals with, and I think we got them 70% on both of their, their things with no advertising. I volunteered to go speak and lobby for them. We endorsed it, and they used our name. We're happy to work with you and put together something functional. I don't want to wait that long. My math says you're going to easily lose probably three to four million dollars by waiting. Why not put it on the ballot measure this time? Quite simple. It's really not that difficult. Mike, I've done quite a bit of research, I mean Supervisor Wilson, it normally takes, or it used to take a quarter percent, and it had to be specifically for roads and road maintenance. Maybe they've changed it. I never saw any of the other ballot measures allowing for the parks, or the other thing. Here's, here's a possible solution. I know you guys go dark for another two meetings, which is unfortunate, because we could use that time to get it on the ballot in November. I'm quite confident that if you work with us and the other community people that I've been discussing this with, after Supervisor Madron brought this to my attention, that we can pass that thing for you with probably 70, 71% easily. That's my opinion, I could be wrong. But all we need to do, in my opinion, is to repeal and replace Measures Z with one-quarter percent of the sales tax going specifically to the roads. Now, if they're going to allow trails and, and the parks, you can throw it in there also. But I would go with that, and I would take 10% of your other quarter percent there, and put that into your parks, and put that into your trails. You're satisfying a whole bunch of people that need to be satisfied that would vote for this thing. It's going to be very easy, I think, for us to pass, get your two-thirds, and I think we could easily do it in November. I think for the $6 million or $3 million that it would take that you're going to save by having this a year sooner, you should be able to hire a consultant to go ahead and get this ready and put it on the ballot without using your existing staff. Highly recommend you invest good money after good money, and we're happy to work with you. We're happy to try and put together a deal with our endorsement. Some people say the Humboldt County Tax Piers League have no snooze at all, but I personally feel that with those endorsements, we get behind something at tax. I mean, who could believe a tax, people would be in favor of a tax? Well, the tax isn't going up a single penny. I can sell that one. It's getting repurposed for specific purposes. That's one of the main things that are brought to me that people object to on Measures Z. They would like to see that be a two-thirds tax for specific purposes. So anyway, that's my suggestion, is you try and put it on the ballot for this November. And I'm quite optimistic that if we structure it together, we can make something that will pass. We've also reached out to Eureka. Pretty soon, I think, Miles will be putting something on there specifically to get them the same health help thing. They've done a great job with their tax. We didn't object to it, and we want to get them qualified as that specific tax two-thirds. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll go to those on the phone. I see one number, 5603. Press star six to mute, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. This is Colin Fisk, Executive Director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. Our members and supporters include hundreds of county residents, as well as a number of local nonprofit organizations. There is, as you know, a very serious and long-running road maintenance deficit in the county, and there's also a safety crisis on our roads, which Supervisor Wilson alluded to. The State Office of Traffic Safety currently ranks Humboldt as the second most dangerous for pedestrians out of all 58 counties in California, and are also ranked among the most dangerous counties for bicyclists. We also have a regional public transit system that is doing as well as it can with very limited resources, but like many others, is struggling to recover from the pandemic-related slump in ridership, and to restore and improve on pre-pandemic service levels. So while it's very important to invest in our existing transportation infrastructure, it wouldn't be responsible to simply try to restore our roads to good condition without addressing the safety crisis and the challenges to our public transportation system. As I believe Supervisor Wilson also mentioned, newly repaved roads in the absence of new safety designs can actually be more dangerous than before due to faster driving. And it's also important for long-term fiscal and environmental responsibility to divert more trips to transit and active transportation, which reduces the overall wear and tear on the roads, and therefore the long-term maintenance deficit. So we are requesting that you include funding for the public transit system and for bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements, so-called complete streets, in the description of any proposed tax to be put on the ballot, and also in any job description for a dedicated staff person if you choose to go in that direction. Provided those items are included, we would strongly support both proposals. Thank you.
All right, thank you. No other hands up? All right. So we'll go back to the board. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it seems most appropriate at this point to perhaps direct staff to come back with some more details. And so I would make that motion. And I think what we're looking for is both short-term and long-term funding for, for roads, trails, and parks, and in particular, adding the elements that Supervisor Wilson and Colin Fisk spoke to. You know, we want to make sure that we're not just doing the same thing we did in the past, but actually trying to make these roads safer for everybody. So I think that requires, you know, staff to come back to us with some suggestions for how we might proceed with some items in the agenda that allow us to act on them. Whereas this was really more informational, trying to bring it forward. I don't think trying to go for November as much as I, you know, Tom and I both, and Alicia, we all really wanted to do this like bam. But this involves the cities. All of the self-help type taxes that have occurred have all gone through their HCOGS or through their COGS. So we need to be reaching out to HCOG. We need to be reaching out to the cities, Tax Piers League, our, you know, other partners, like the organization that Colin works with and others. So directing staff, I'm trying to simplify it here, Nicole.
I guess.
So directing staff to come back to us with recommendations for both short-term and long-term funding sources for roads, trails, parks, and for providing details on allocating a grant writing position.
Grant management.
Like I said, providing the details for grant writing management-type position, and to also have the CAO reach out to the Measures Z Committee to start some discussions about short-term types of dedicated funding we might see with roads. So basically, directing staff to come back to us with a bunch of recommendations on these issues.
Okay, synthesize what we talked about today and bring it back.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. One last piece was also to come back to us with a recommendation for setting up an ad hoc, where two members of this board would work with Tom and the CAO's office to help bring this material together.
I think the second one is probably fine with that.
Yeah. I'm fine with that. It's okay.
A lot of pieces, basically bringing it back so we can really take a look at all the details.
Supervisor Bone?
When that comes back, and I'm just wondering, don't all the departments we're talking about, whatever, isn't that all Public Works? So can't this just be a specific Public Works? And we probably, instead of us deciding where they need the money, maybe give, let them manage it, and the ability that we have department heads and people over there doing it, so we're not going 95, three and a half, two and a half, or anything else? I'm sure if the parks need it, they'll need it. I mean, we're, right now, transit monies are just, I mean, I think I just saw $40 million come in on transit money, so I'm not too worried about transit. And that's all for apartments. So I just, a lot of it. So, so anyway, I'm just, it just seems for us to, to manage how he spends his money, where he should be just getting the money and doing what the proper thing is. roadside management, is that, is that what he needs? Then, then, you know, then we do that. But do we need to fix roads? Do we need to tell people they can't drive on certain roads and abandon them? I don't know. But I just, I think it's their call rather than us.
I appreciate that input, and I think that's exactly what we're doing. We're not setting any percentages or anything. We've really had a discussion. And I think by setting up that ad hoc, working directly with Tom and the CAO's office, we can come back with a clear set of guidelines on how we might go about all of this. So we're not making any decisions today about how we're going to do that. I think we're setting up a process to be able to get the details directly from Tom, with the assistance of the CAO, and two board members to really hone in on what we need to do here.
Do we have the ability or an interest to decide, I mean, ask what two members could be the ad hoc? What would be most useful for the CAO?
Got to agendize it, I believe.
Yeah, I think the agenda item wasn't, you know, didn't provide for an happening necessarily.
I was trying to find a quicker route.
I know, yeah. Well, we can, you know, return with that one sooner rather than later, because we need that group to come together right away. It will unfortunately be a discussion item, but.
Okay. All right. I think we've got that. Nikki, do you have that? Are you sure the look on your face?
Close enough. Okay, are we ready for a roll call? Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Ten-four.
Thank you. Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I think that's the end of our work today. So, another long day. All right, we adjourned.
All right, re-adjourned.